County Council meeting is now in session. The Honorable Michael Johnson will give invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Please stand.
As we gather here tonight, we ask for your blessings and guidance. We pray for our troops and all those who are in harm's way. We pray for peace. We pray that you give your guiding hand on our deliberations and assist us in making decisions that affect our community and state. We pray that we achieve success by working together and being mindful of our goals. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I think we have one oath of office, Michael?
Yes, sir.
So Pierre, I'm gonna probably mess up your last name. How do you pronounce your last name?
(inaudible).
Oh, he would've tore it up.
That's exactly the way I would've said it.
He would've tore it up. That's right.
(inaudible). I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified, appointed to the Constitution of this state, to exercise the duties of the office, to which I've been appointed, and I will, to best my ability, discharge the duties thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and the Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you, President.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Wow.
Under appearances, Ms. Miller?
Good evening. For the record, Audrey Miller, Planning Director. We are here tonight to do a small presentation on the 5311 grant program. We are proposing as a staff that we transfer the administrative duties over to the York County Council on Aging. The last time I was here with the grant application, a couple council members expressed concern. So we wanted to do a presentation before we come back in a couple weeks with the actual contract. So Allison Love, my Transportation Planner, will be doing the actual presentation. But we also have in attendance tonight Janet Jones and David Burgess from DOT. They are with the Office of Public Transit. They are here to ask ques-- excuse me, answer questions that council may have. And we also have Wendy Duda and Lynn Garris from the York County Council on Aging. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Love.
Good evening.
Hi. How are you?
Again, my name is Allison Love. I'm the Transportation Planner for York County. And I'm gonna give you an overview of York County Access, and we'll follow up at the end of the presentation with some time to answer questions if you have any staff. So York County Access first began in May of 2006, and it's a transportation service for essential services for the general population. It operates Monday through Friday, and rides are scheduled at least 48 hours in advance through the Council on Aging. Trips are $2.50 one-way, and this service is funded with a combination of federal 5311 grant funds, SCDOT state miss transit funds, and a match provided from York County's general fund. So York County's bus service, who is in charge? The grant ultimately comes from the Federal Highway Administration. It goes through the South Carolina Department of Public Transportation and York County Government, and then we have a contract with the York County Council on Aging. We currently own four cutaway buses that are handicapped equipped, and we have a contract with the Council on Aging that has one-year terms for extension, and the contract expires on June 30th, 2016. So what are our responsibilities? As you can see here, there are many departments within the county government that are involved with York County Access. Primarily, the Planning and Development Services Department coordinates these tasks, but at some point throughout the year, all of these departments are involved. York County's responsibilities. I won't go through all of these, but you can see it's a pretty extensive list of what we're responsible for with administration of access. We apply for the grants. We also contract with the Council on Aging and the DOT. We purchase and insure the vehicles. We prepare several reports on a quarterly and annual basis to the DOT. We verify that each trip that is taken with Access qualifies for our funding, and we prepare check requests and invoices through the Council on Aging and the DOT. Council on Aging's responsibilities primarily revolve around daily operation, which includes staffing and the testing and certification that goes with maintaining your drivers. They also do the routine vehicle maintenance, marketing, and trip scheduling. In 2014, we had a review by the South Carolina Department of Transportation, Office of Public Transit. This review covered three fiscal years of administration. Because York County performed well during this review period, the DOT Office of Public Transit is offering York County the opportunity to streamline grant purchasing procedures by designating the York County Council on Aging as the direct sub-recipient for federal 5311 non-urbanized area public transportation funds administered through the DOT. York County Access would continue to be a service of York County Government, but the administration would be added to the duties of the Council on Aging, relieving York County of the responsibility of DOT administrator reviews and allowing capital to be purchased directly by the Council on Aging through state contract. So how will Access benefit? The Council on Aging, as the direct recipient, would report directly to the DOT, relieving much of the county's staff from the daily responsibilities. The Council on Aging would be able to use the state procurement process instead of going through the county's lengthy purchasing process. The county can request the DOT to submit a copy of all compliance reviews of the Council on Aging for quality assurance, and the administrative and operational responsibilities of the 5311 grant would be assumed by the Council on Aging. In addition, the DOT can transfer the titles of the four buses that are currently owned and maintained and insured by the county to the Council on Aging. Application of future grants could be made the responsibility of the Council on Aging. In compliance with the county's emergency operations plan, we would continue to be able to use the four buses if there was a need of an emergency. We could use them for transit during declared emergency evacuations. And the county would continue to contribute the local match funds for the operation of Access Bus Service in the non-urbanized area of York County. So in the end, what we're looking for is to make this service more efficient and therefore more effective. It is a use of government funding and a service provided by York County, so we know that efficiency is our ultimate goal. And I'll turn it back over to Ms. Miller so that she can discuss further the agreement and resolution that would be required if we do move forward with this.
Basically, what we would be proposing for council is, on July 1 of this year, the Council on Aging would take over the administrative duties. They already have the operational duties. This would require a resolution by council and a new agreement between the county and the Council on Aging. We do have a draft of both of those. The Council on Aging is currently reviewing it. The OPT has done this in other communities, and they can tell you how it's worked for them. In the contract, we basically would adopt the already existing provisions with extras to deal with the administrative duties. The one big thing that would be in there is, I believe it was in September of last year when they purchased buses, the county provided the funds, provided that the Council on Aging would reimburse the county when the administrative duties, basically was when the title was transferred. So we have not transferred title yet. We would do that with the transfer of the administrative duties, and then they would reimburse the county for those funds. We are proposing a three-year agreement. We would terminate the existing agreement and have it replaced by this one. So with that, I'm here to take any questions, and as I said, the DOT representatives are here as well.
Questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
I have, I guess, more of a comment than a question, but Ms. Duda and I have spoken on previous occasions about concerns brought from constituents in my district in not being able to get scheduled sometimes when they call far enough in advance, as far as, you know, being told. And haven't heard it lately, so I'm hoping it is all cleared up. But being told that it is a Medicaid-funded program, and that unless there's somebody that's on Medicaid in that area, they won't come and pick them up. And I know we've discussed it, and Ms. Duda's done some retraining, so I'm hoping that that's not something that comes up anymore. But I'm assuming since we would still have a county match, that if something like that does come up, we still have some ways of, you know, going back to the Council on Aging and addressing concerns.
Yes.
Questions? You're off the hook.
Okay. Thank you.
Next person's Lisa. Lisa Haygood. She's our County Engineer Director.
Mr. Chairman, Council. I'm here tonight and thank you for the opportunity to update you all on Arrow Road construction. If you all recall, on March 16th of the council meeting, you guys awarded the low bid to Rogers Grading. Since then, we officially closed the road on April 15th, and then on April 22nd, we had the pre-construction meeting. Weather has not been very cooperative late March and early April with all the rain. So it got us a little bit behind, but the last couple weeks, the contractor's been working really hard and getting us caught up, and we're still on schedule. To date, so far, they've installed erosion control, started grading. As of today, they've already put in over 100 feet of sewer line and about 160 feet of 42-inch storm grain. I guess just to let you know over the summer, what you're gonna see is they're gonna continue doing grading and putting in utilities most of the summer. It's water, sewer, and storm drainage. And then later on this summer, you'll start seeing curb going in, and then just after that, paving. We are ahead of schedule actually, because I think our original estimate, we said it would be December when the road opens. Right now, it's mid-September. So basically, that is my update on Arrow Road. Just to let you know about the Pennies program, Arrow Road is one of 36 active projects we have. And we're getting ready to go into design with six more. So we'll have 42 active projects, which leads me into something that I wanted to just use this opportunity. Each of you were provided this booklet. Our staff's very proud of it. It's a project status report for Pennies. I'm in it. It's a very comprehensive guide. It has an introduction, and for folks, it gives you some definitions of what exactly we do during the different phases, design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. And as you get in about page three, it gives you a rundown of all of our projects. It's a real quick, quick view of what the project is, who our project manager is. If you have questions, you can call them directly. And then you can see that shaded bar chart that shows you where we are, design, right-of-way, or construction. And it even gives you some budget information, and we update this monthly. So this is our April update, and as you can see, it says, just on Arrow Road, it says we, you know, we awarded the contract. So we're, you know, we're now getting into May, and we'll be updating it each month and then putting it on our website.
So this is two and three listings, Pennies Two and Pennies Three?
Yes. Yes, sir.
All current projects.
Right.
Now, it doesn't list, you know, like our gravel paving is broken out into, you know, part A, part B, and that list, that's like seven projects, just in Pennies Three and gravel. We don't break all those out. That, kind of treat those a little bit differently, and we do those in groups. Arrow Road's in part of our gravel paving, but it's different because it became a, you know, a bigger road as far as putting in utilities and curb. So we're treating it more like some of our other highway jobs. Further back in the booklet, our consultants provide this for us also. We call these snapshots, each project, and they're in the order that the first list is, so it's easy to find. And the snapshot, again, gives you a real quick look of, you know, what the schedule is for the project. It shows you a map, so you have an idea where it's at, some budget information. And then also, we kind of went with the traffic signal idea with the green, yellow, red, and it tells you, you know, are we on schedule? Are things progressing as they should? It's yellow if things are, you know, the schedule may change or something like that. And we spell it out on the action plan, what's going on. But our staff was rather proud of this. This is the first time we've done anything like this. We hope it's a useful guide for you if anybody calls you and asks you about a project. And like I said, we're working on making this available. As soon as we get an update, we'll put it on the website, so our website will be more interactive.
So if a citizen's asked for a report, you just say, "Go to the website," and you'll get the whole thing?
Yes. Yeah. We would love to print hundreds and hundreds of copies of this, but these would be expensive. I've already printed a few to show you all. But I think, I think that's it as far as my update, and if anyone has any questions.
Questions for Lisa?
Very quickly.
Yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
Can you give us... I like this. I'm used to this format through RFAT, so I sort of like that. Can you also give us updates, though, on delays that we see in projects that are actually caused by DOT review times?
If you, I think there's a few in here that do show that.
I see the purple, you know, like on Polwrench Road.
Yeah, we don't specifically say like DOT, because sometimes it may be an environmental permit. It's different review agencies. So we've grouped it all together and just called it review agency. But yeah, we are starting to show that now. We do get asked that question all the time, why does it take so long? So we're trying to be more, not as vague as we've been in the past. We're trying to be more definitive on what's going on with the project, hence why we're doing a monthly update.
And I think to the point of Mr. Johnson, it is important, because like Pennies One, when I got on, they were still doing Pennies One. In fact, they just did the last one a year, six months ago. And at that time, I said, gee, this is 18 years, guys. We need to cut this in half. So I think to the point which you're on top of, that every councilman here wants to see a lot more efficiency. Without it, we're costing the taxpayer a lot of money, and I'm sure you do too. So I think we're headed in the right direction.
We have an agreement with DOT, intergovernmental agreement, which says that they, we're gonna give them a, we'll give them a report, and with the next amount of days, I think it's 30.
30 days.
40, when you have act or in the weekends or whatever, they're gonna get us a response back. What I'd like to be able to track is, on every one of these, how often they're meeting their own agreement with the county. And if they're not meeting the agreement with the county, I think we need to bring that up with state officials to help kind of further along that you're costing us, you cost us 50 days last year. You cost us 20 days last year, and kind of be able to report that back.
I agree. We agree with you, and we have already started working with our consultants to do that type tracking. So we don't have anything that we are publishing that says that, but we have internal tracking that each consultant has to tell us, okay, how long has SCDOT or whichever review agency had it? So we can track that.
And are we--
And it goes both ways. They want to track us as well.
Well, and I guess my next question is, are we internally tracking our consultants to see you're not meeting deadlines, and therefore we need, we don't need you to be a consultant next time around?
That's another improvement that we're in.
Yes, we are.
We're trying, we're trying to work on that. It has not been tracked as well as it should have been, but we're working on that. And the other thing that we want to do, I was looking at Mr. Shanahan to get the okay to say this, we're gonna look at having a consultant come in and look at some efficiency ideas to help us out on Pennies. We have lots of ideas internally. However, it always takes a fresh look on the outside to come in.
I think your timing's good. I think it was time for a fresh look, kind of revitalized energy, focus on the--
Absolutely.
I mean, it's a great program, but there's things that need to be improved.
We'll be meeting with folks within the next couple of weeks, and we've also got meetings with the DOT in the next couple of weeks to talk about those very things.
And that was gonna be my next question, and Bruce, I'm gonna let you talk in one second. That was gonna be my next question. Where are we, I know that we've had some meetings with DOT and the Governor's Office. Where are we on that?
The pilot program.
The pilot program.
We have gone through all the ideas that SCDOT had on the pilot program. We've written our, I guess, answers or rebuttals to them, just talking points, maybe I'll call it that. And we've scheduled a meeting, I think it's May 12th?
Sixteenth.
16th. We're going down to Columbia to meet with them and basically just start the conversations and just go one by one with their idea and bounce some ideas. But my goal is to, after that, set up more routine meetings with, at staff level, so we can, so we can start making some real changes.
Who else involved in those meetings?
So far, I mean, the initial meeting, it'll be Mr. Larson, Mr. Shanahan, myself, Ron Patton with SCDOT, and I'm not sure what other staff on the SCDOT side.
But once we get direction, I'll be stepping back and letting them do their own jobs.
And Mr. Henderson, we admire your patience.
Thank you. Just about forgot what I was gonna ask. Just wanted to find out, how relevant is it that with the EPA coming down with additional regulations over the last couple of Januaries? And, you know, I've had people to call me about the delays on Polwrench and some other roads that probably should have been further along at this point. And of course, along with maybe even some others. But, you know, and I hear it is legitimate concerning the EPA coming down with these regulations, as the distinguished gentleman here was raising $1,000 worth down in Columbia to our low, to our state guys as far as the regulations are concerned, and the, well, actually, the excess of regulations. If they'd back off, you know, and changed some things, we could get things done a lot faster and efficiently. But how relevant is it about the EPA handing down new regulations each January, seemingly to just get us all filed up even worse? Could you fill me in on that?
It's, I don't know all of the details of all the different regulations, but there's no mercy on us because, you know, we're, we're a government, and we have to follow all of the rules. So it's very relevant. It's, environmental is the very first step that we do on all of our roadway projects is to, you know, look at streams, wetlands, any other environmental impacts, and that's taken into account. So early on in the process, it's, it's a long period of time that we have to do that while we're doing the initial planning, is all the environmental.
I just want to really emphasize to the folks that are out there and those that are watching by TV, computer, whatever, want it, I want it to be known that some of these things that are being handed down from unfunded mandates to just new regulations from unelected bureaucrats on up the line, I don't like it. I hope you don't like it. That's what causes a lot of these delays. When you start regulating, when a mud hole or a mud puddle develops by an act of God, and it don't matter how deep, or how small, or how wide it is, and when it can start getting regulated and hold some of these projects up when we already have reasonable, reasonable, common sense regulations in place, folks, I hope you're willing to stand against that type of thing, whether it be through the elections, or whether it be you contacting your congressman, or whatever it may be. But please, please be active in helping us, because a lot of folks don't know some of the things that we have to deal with. And I'm gonna be honest with you, it's rather aggravating when they keep handing these things down. And I'm talking about unelected bureaucrats that can change rules in midstream, no pun intended, but, but when they change in the middle of things, you know, we have to comply up to a certain extent until we finally just tell them no. So please help us tell them no.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Okay. Now, we're gonna have public forum. If you came to talk about the TIF or the Lake Wylie Drive situation, wait for the public hearing, because you're not restricted by time. So when I get to some names, if I'm not sure why you're here, I'll call your name out if you're here for the public hearing. Well, I'll ask you if you live on Lake Wylie Drive. If you say yes, I know what you're here for. First person is Mr. Bobby Walker.
Robert Bobby Walker, 5690 Williams Road in beautiful Bethesda community, Rock Hill, South Carolina address. It's been a little while, so I thought I'd come back in front of y'all, the TV and video.
It's been two weeks.
It's been two weeks.
In the newspaper world, the York County, and great to see y'all again this evening. Thank you for your service. The York County Multipurpose Agritourism Event Center Committee will meet at the Greater York Chamber of Commerce this Thursday, the 7th of May at 6:00 PM. Chamber Building, if you don't know, is located 23 East Liberty Street, York, South Carolina, right between the library and the good old coal yard. Any interested persons willing to serve on this committee are encouraged to attend. If you have any questions, suggestions, or concerns, you can contact me, Bobby Walker, 803-230-4588, or RH Walker at Comporium, not net, if that's working. On the little bit of time I have remaining, I do want to remind folks about moving York Forward Community Meeting tomorrow evening. That's to get the public input on our comprehensive land use plan. And that's tomorrow night, between 5:00 and 7:30, a drop-in at the Baxter Movement Center. And remember to vote tomorrow, either for it or against it. If you live in Fort Mill or Rock Hill School District, you either want your taxes raised or go further in debt. So it's your choice, but exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. And we appreciate what you're doing for the ag tourism stuff. Let's see. Mr. Chapel, you're here for TIF, so just wait for the public hearing. Rhea Hamm. Ms. Hamm? No, Ms. Hamm?
Might be an overflow.
Give her a second.
Yeah. See if a Ms. Hamm's coming down the hallway.
We can take her after the next one.
Hey, I'll wait a couple seconds here. But there's no activity there, so. And Ms. Harper, you're here for the Lake Wylie Drive? Ms. Harper? Lake Wylie Drive? Okay. And Mr. Wagner, same? Lake Wylie Drive?
Yes, sir.
Okay. How about Mr. Acock? Lake Wylie? Lake Wylie Drive?
Drive.
Okay. And Mr. Bard?
Resigning.
For Lake Wylie Drive?
No, it's in Riverdale.
Okay, and that's public, public hearing? Okay, yeah, you wait for that one. So down to Dale Dove. Dale, come on forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. My name's Dale Dove, 2415 Fern Cliff Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. Five years ago, you all took a chance on something that was untested and unproven. It was a concept that we had called Renew Our Community. And you let us use the former Good Motor Company Kia building on the corner of Dave Lyle and White Street in Rock Hill, the former showroom, and a body shop behind it, to start something that we didn't know exactly how it was gonna work, but you all gave us the opportunity. You entered into a lease with an organization that I started called Renew Our Community, and it's up for first reading again tonight after five years. My offer to you was, we will use the building as long as you don't need it, and we'll take care of it, and we'll do something good with it, and we have. And Mr. Williams will probably, may say it again tonight, anytime you need it, you just let us know. The contract says you give us 60 days, and we're not gonna say anything about it. So if you all have something else to do with it, but until you need it, we would like to continue to use it. This past year, we had, Rock Central is a social emergency room, and it serves people who are in dire straits. And we, no matter who they are, what they look like, if they walk in, if you don't know what to do or where to send them, you send them to us, because we want them. We're open six days a week from about 10 o'clock or 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, till 5:00 or 5:30 or so, and they can come there. We've had 924 new people, unfortunately, come to Rock Central. Last year, we had over 18,000 people that actually came through the door. A lot of those were return people, but people that signed in coming through the door. What do they get when they get there? Well, they get treated like a decent person. They could get food. We gave food to probably over 2,000 different people last year, two bag, a two-day amount of grocery. We do laundry vouchers. We do transportation. We gave about 2,500 rides to people last year. Doctors and jobs and DEHAC or DSS, those sorts of things. We provide bathrooms for people to come to. We can give them, help them go to showers and laundry, kerosene vouchers, those things. We do job training--
Dale, I hate to--
--and other things. I'm done.
Cut you off. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's see. I think we, well, I guess that is it for the public forum. So we're gonna have our public hearings now. Oh, before that, though, I think Mr. Henderson wanted to make a statement. Yes--
Yes, in total honor of Mr. Thomas Burton Senior, who we lost this past week on, I believe it was April the 29th, he was a former council member from 1995 to 2002. We want to recognize him and his service, and there was a service there today at 2:00 which I was not able to make. I was, I just got in from Florida, and I've been gone, and I hate that I missed that, and I apologize to the family. And I'm thinking some of the others had some prior commitments, but I wanna make it very clear that we honor this very good and decent man. I've had some opportunities to work with him in the last year. Very gracious man, Christian man, and I want to make it known that if you would, if you know any of his family members, to please give special attention and maybe get in touch with those folks and offer your condolences, your prayers, and your thoughts, if you don't mind. But again, we honor this very good and decent man who served York County with extreme distinguishment from 1995 to 2002. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Okay, we're gonna have public hearing now. The first order, and let me say this, we have nine public hearings tonight, most I can remember in my five years. So I would ask, at a public hearing, you have your time, you're not limited to two minutes, but I would ask out of courtesy for everybody else that you try to keep it to the point as much as you can. That being said, first public hearing is to hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance authorizing a Second Amendment to the intergovernmental agreement binding between the City of Rock Hill and York County relating to the Textile Corridor redevelopment plan, the amended downtown redevelopment plan, the Red River redevelopment plan, the Manchester Village redevelopment plan, and other matters related thereto. So anybody here wanna speak in favor? Yes, sir. Manning, be sure to give your name and address.
I'm Manning Kimmel, 1862 Oak Park Road in Rock Hill. And I'm here tonight in my capacity as Chair of the York County Economic Development Board, which is pleased to support this initiative. We took formal action to do so months and months ago after a complete presentation and vetting with the RH EDC. Our job, as you all well know, is to create good-paying jobs whenever and wherever we can here in York County. And we believe any new job that we are successful in creating is a job opportunity for any person in York County. And whether we like it or not, we all know that offering incentives to new industry is just the way economic development happens in this country and right here in York County. And in fact, much of the new industry that we have been successful attracting here in York County over the years is a result of decisions that this council and past councils have taken to make those incentives happen. We feel that Knowledge Park is just as exciting an opportunity to create hundreds of new jobs. Lord knows how much new economic development, $100 million plus, and we encourage council to proceed with offering whatever the final package is for the TIF, which is needed to make this project a reality. We all know that this is an essential component for the projects that are already being seriously considered to get underway, and we would encourage you to take positive action on the final package. Thank you.
Thank you, Manning. Appreciate it. Anybody else in favor? And I'm waiting a second in case somebody, I hear clicking down the hallway of somebody running down the hallway. Nope. Okay, anybody opposed? Mr. Chapel?
Well, my granddad sang a song when he got up. He said he sung the song temporarily, and it said it'd take him a long time to get there. Thank you for letting me come before you, but it takes me a little longer to get there.
We appreciate it, Mr. Chapel.
Ladies and gentlemen, present tonight, I don't have any animosity, I don't have any ugliness or words to say against anyone, but I wanna tell you how I feel. I'm 86 years old, and, uh, while I'm no authority on the subject, I'm opinionated on most of them. I have a book in my hand I hold up to you that came out of the Rock Hill Library from 1785 to, oh, well into the 1900s. And it tells about how Rock Hill got started, the names of the people, the pine hills of yesteryear that came across the ocean. It tells about how they, who they are. They were names like you all, I think, know, like the Cherries and the Johnsons and the Barnes and the Johnny Black Crowds, Bunt, the Prince Riley, and the Tom Knox, the blacksmiths of yesteryear, and the barbershop crowds, and they all rested in this book. They built, after the Civil War, the mule-drawn trolley cars. For the same downtown Rock Hill, you could take a picture in 1900 of it, and to take it today, and it looks the same. They built all of that without a penny of what's taking place and being asked for today. Those names that I mentioned to you did it out of here in their love for a new country, and they built America. And now, in my lifetime of serving on this council almost, I saw the townfathers of seven put the top on to save downtown Rock Hill. Millions of dollars spent from one end of the street, from the railroad all the way out to Saluda Street with the top. Millions of dollars. And I saw it fail miserably, and I saw 'em go to thousands and thousands of dollars to take the top off. And I saw that same city council say now it's a restaurant, a restaurant town, eating a restaurant. And I saw 'em investing. I saw that fail. Then they invited all the senior citizens to retire and come downstairs in apartments up on top. And after investing lots and lots of money, that failed. And I saw 'em come before this county council and beg us to put the library down there. I sit right over there. Do something for downtown Rock Hill, please. Put a child library down here. We got these buildings here, and they're going to the bad in the old Main Street, and my God help us out. We gonna revitalize, and y'all will be a part of it. I voted to put the library down there. That's Project Five that they tried. Now they got another one called College Town. And that's okay, that's the city government's business. I don't have anything to do with that. But I do have something to do with the school board. I live in Rock Hill School District, and my chapel, bednar operation pays thousands of dollars a year, and our farm holdings, thousands a year into the Rock Hill school And the Rock Hill school system voted five to two to take the money that they stood on that council elected by the people and raised their right hand and solemnly swore that they would protect the interest, the well-being, the welfare, the progress and the education of those schoolchildren. And not only that, the Constitution of the United States and the United States and the state government, so help me God. And it didn't mean a hill of beans to 'em. It's all right to tell me a lie, but when you stand up and with a right hand sworn and you tell a lie to up there, it's something else, you white folks. There's something wrong with you. But they did it, and they still stand with pride. Gonna take my money and give it to a downtown group of my friends, come from the bloodline of these people that built that town? And they gonna disgrace it by asking to go on welfare with somebody else's money, and I'm supposed to like that? Well, I don't. And now they come crawling to you and say, we want you to take the money that we've been paying you for all these, this service that you run to us, and we want you to forgive us for 30 years, 25 or 30, or whatever it is. We wanna put that in our pocket over at the city council, and we wanna spend it down there and splurge it again like they've done already five or six projects. Well, the school board said, yeah, come on, get it. Lied to their constituency. As far as I'm concerned, I don't wanna use wrong words, but that's me. That's a miracle, and that's what built us, to tell the truth and give the facts. And now they coming up here begging to you seven. They got the seven at the school board, the seven at the county, city council is what's doing it, and now they gonna come over here before you and say, lie to your people under that oath of office you took and give us this money and let us keep it. We don't owe you nothing for X number of 20, 30 years. We not paying you for all the service you gonna run to, to the city of Rock Hill. Am I right about that? We do give a service, Mr. Chairman, to the city of Rock Hill? A lot of service. The jails, the lawyers, the polister, the so-and-so, and so-and-so, I could go on and on and on. But now we supposed to do it free? I just don't see that. I don't see it at all. And so, I stand before you humbly to tell you that I think it's wrong for that element. These men here that built that town, a turnover in their grave, if they know their bloodline was down on a welfare list, that they do this to their city that they built with sweat and blood and their money. Not a dime of school kids' money went into this book. Not a dime of the county money at that time went into this Rock Hill story book. And they would turn over in their grave. I had the honor of knowing the bloodline that I talk about. I had the honor of respecting the bloodline that's in this book. I had the honor of doing business with dozens of them over the years. And now, they wanna turn that town into a bunch of beggars to take the school kids' money, and now they gonna take your money designated by law to you, into your operation. I saw it all happen right before my eyes. As I said, you're my town, you're everything to me, my bankers, and lawyers, and doctors, and hospitals, and car dealers. And you trying to save a dead horse? I'm an old country vet learn, allowed to practice in this state by the Supreme Court. And you trying to save a dead horse? You tried five, and this is the sixth time, and you took an oath of office, the school board did, to protect the kids and educate them, and now they gonna give all this money over to the city council of Rock Hill? And I ask you tonight, county council, will you also violate the oath of office you took? And you'll never learn to let, you ever let any organization, you ever let any group of citizens ever get on somebody else's pocketbook? Money that's been going another way, you'll never get it back. You will add the fuel to the fire. You will continue to come before this council and extend the TIF district over and over again. And what hurts me to the bone is my friends on these councils, in this book's grandchildren that are still in that government, they come begging you for the school kids' money. I just don't get that. They're going on public welfare, whether you look at it that way or not. They're doing what they gonna do with somebody else's money. Anybody can do well with somebody else's money. You become a citizen and a man when you do it on what the law allows you to have. You don't go over to your neighbors and take his lawnmower and take his money to put wood off windows in your house. You don't do that if you're gonna make a good American. I see this taking place here, and they're trying to fix a dead horse. The town, ladies and gentlemen, four years ago went out Cherry Road. The town is out toward York now, toward Newport. The town has gone out Dave Lyle Boulevard to the Galleria. Rock Hill is a dead horse, and I'm not saying let it go down, I'm saying there need to be streets through it, but any day, any one day, I've done it. You can go out Cherry Road and out to the new shopping center coming toward York, and out Dave Lyle, and you can count 30,000 automobiles in a three-hour period, counting what's running down Cherry Road and in the parking lots of those shopping centers. And you can go downtown, you might see 274 on a weekday. On Main Street and on the right going toward York, down Main Street at Rock Hill, you might see 107 out into that lot, down to City Hall, you might count 72. And all of that Cherry Road, all that out toward York, and all that down Dave Lyle, not a dime, not a dime did those folks ask this government or the school board to give them one dime to do that. And now, I don't know what you're gonna do, but I'll tell you one thing, if you take your oath of office and throw it in the gutter, don't go home and wonder what's happened to the rest of America, for the state and in Washington, because you've joined the You didn't hold up that Constitution and that Bill of Rights, and you didn't hold up your ancestors' blood. And America today, in my lifetime, in my lifetime, I saw us whipped strong enough as a free republic, and this thing you fixing to do is not coming from a free republic, it's coming from socialism that paralyzed Europe. I saw 'em come back from World War II and talk to many of them. World War I, gassed and crippled, fighting for freedom because we were a free republic. The Kaiser had taken them over, and I saw the same thing happen in World War II. I saw our boys march from the chapel community in the chapel farm in the Smith's Turnout in Ogden Community. I went to, after the war, I went to seven funerals shipped back in a box, dead, fighting the same way these folks fought for freedom in a free republic, not using somebody else's And I saw Europe, the reason we had to do it, because they had a socialist government they all took from Peter to pay Paul. They never had a dime to build a gun or rifle of the type ammunition to fight the Kaiser or Hitler or Mussolini. I told you. But that free republic that these ancestors built here in York County, they had the gall to build something that you are giving away today, your freedom, your free republic that we defended Europe with. And this is another example of sending us to the dogs and taking us down to the torment of torment. So I'm telling you, asking you, council members, to think a long time before you do that. You will do a B and B a credit to Rock Hill if you had the guts... You will do a B and B, a credit to Rock Hill if you had the guts to tell them to stand on their own two feet. You've got taxing ability. You've got barring power. You do your own thing. You don't come take money away from us and make us spend money on you. You don't take money at any angle or any agency from the school kids of York County and call yourself a gentleman or a lady, in my opinion. So I'm going to tell you now that the city of Rock Hill, you should not help them to become a welfare participant or recipient. You should not allow that to happen. And it hurts me to the bone to have to say this about the grandkids and great-grandkids of the people that I bow down to in my lifetime that built Rock Hill. So please, for God's sake, come to your senses and you will do them a favor if you tell them no. And you'll do your constituency a favor. You'll do York County a favor, in particular, you'll do the city of Rock Hill a favor. I'm tired of seeing them and seeing them fail and hold theirself up and stand up like that they are some kind of god and king. And they're failures. I respect the failure, but I don't want him to keep getting in my pocketbook. And I'll help anybody that's down, but I ain't going to help them up forever. And if you ever started with Rock Hill, you're going to continue with Rock Hill. I thank you. I wish you well. And I love you very much. And I love my ancestry of Rock Hill, my father being one of them. And I love the government that you set on. And I don't have very much time to do anything, but my grandfather lived to be 102. My father lived to be almost 100. And I'm just 83, I mean 86. Thank you for your time. God bless you. I love you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chapel. We miss you. Uh, next.
Say, you want to say something?
I was just saying, thank you very much. We miss you.
Say it again.
Hello, Mr. Nick is here again. So, uh, how you doing, man? Reagan Craig, 1804 Craig Road, Rock Hill. I'm here again, once again about the TIF. And one thing that I think kind of a story that parallels is, any of y'all ever built a house or had a house remodeled? I did in 86 and a good friend of mine did it. And before it was over with, I called him, uh, One More Day Construction Company. Because I asked him every day, "When are you going to get through?" And he kept telling me, "One more day. Just give me one more day." And so, in the, into 1986, the house got finished, remodeling was done. And the Rock Hill TIF incident and the downtown redevelopment reminds me of that. Except you could call them One More 10 Years Construction Company. Because at the end of the time period that's coming up here, you do know that if this is extended, they've been working down there for 51 years. 51 years. The last 26, I don't care how you slice it and what little bit of financial data I saw, was an abysmal failure. And I'm sorry, you know, people tell me I need to keep getting out of the cow business. Well, they tripled prices last year. So we still in the cow business, but I don't see downtown tripling. And I don't see that happening. And things change and things don't always work. But then, this is getting a little disturbing because I was involved to a point, y'all had me looking up stuff and getting facts and figures and everything when Dr. Chapel was still on here. And I still don't have any answers. And yet, here we are in front of the county council having a public hearing. Now, I don't know whether the appropriate term, are we getting railroaded or street card? I don't know which would be the appropriate one to say. But the fact is, is that y'all are having a public hearing, which is a legal requirement of doing this, and there's no facts out there. I still don't know if this is going to cost me as a taxpayer 300,000, 3 million, 4 million. How much is it going to cost? Nobody knows. Is there a contract with a developer out there that we could review and then publicly comment on? Is there any of that there? No, there's not. There's nothing out there. This is kind of like pass it and then we'll read it. Sound familiar? It's a bad thing. And when you see this being moved along and moved along, I saw Britt's piece in the paper where he said, "Well, we can always have a second public hearing." Well, why are we having the first? We don't have anything to comment on. Well, there are other things you can comment on. Anytime you see something getting moved along in a hurry, it makes anybody wonder. So then you go start looking. I came here in November and I talked to y'all about the Cato report and gave everybody a copy about how in Chicago, years ago, it turned, and Chicago today is turned into a deal where when they do these kind of arrangements, whoever's in power at the time winds up donating money into the campaign accounts of elected officials after it's over with. It's one of the bad parts, the ugly parts that happens. Because this is not economic development in its true sense. Because we don't know what we're getting. We have no clue. And for some reason, for some reason, everybody's being pressured, pass it. Now, got to have it. The school district just gave them 40-something million bucks in the future. And they got a referendum tomorrow asking me for 110 million more. You wonder why he's upset? Good grief, who wouldn't be? And why is this moving along so fast? Well, when I find something like that, always then I go to look it. And I go to dig it. It's in my nature. A lot of people don't like it. But that's fine. That's kind of one of the things I do. I can't stand an injustice. Just like I learned it from that man right back there. So I start looking around and why is this moving so forward so fast? And Councilman Roddy, I remember you jumping Paul Andarko at the last meeting. You didn't like us being called Little Chicago or Lucky Like Chicago. But how are we behaving, y'all? How's this turning out? We have nothing to look at. We have no contract to inspect. We don't know how much it's going to cost. We don't know what projects are going to be done, what's first, who's getting the money? Who, do any of y'all know it? If you have it, you hadn't shared it with the public, but we're sitting here having a public hearing. So then I go to look for reasons why. Now, Paul Chad got picked on here on this early on about having a house in the district. It's very common for elected officials to have properties in districts like this. And it's not unusual. And the Ethics Commission says, "Well, if it's greater than 50 or 60 parcels, then he shouldn't have to legally recuse himself." So I'm not going to pick on Chad today, but I did go pull a few ethics reports. And one, it stuck out to me, Buck, I went and looked up yours. And you remember I told you how money wound up in campaign accounts? With your state Ethics Commission report, I pulled it up. From last year, the first six months, you gained, you got $3,000 in contributions from people out there in the public, which is the right thing to do. I've donated political offices before. But in that list, there's $2,300 of that $3,000 that came from VG Simpson Family Limited Partnership, Clear Springs Development, L Close, M L T Investments, which is the tunnel company, and Rock Hill Coca-Cola Bottling Company. If you go to Knowledge Park's website, guess who the leaders and partners are? Those companies are listed. Now, these things may be legitimate and perfectly explainable, but the fact of the matter is, is that what I mentioned in the Cato report, what goes on in Chicago on these kind of deals, it's a slippery slope. And you slowly slide into, all of a sudden, you're getting contributions from those who you're voting for. It ain't clean, y'all, and we don't have any information. I don't know how the referendum on the school thing will turn out tomorrow. I did read to y'all at the last time this came up, how the superintendent refused to give us any information on what they did on the TIF at the school board. I have that letter from Kelly Pugh that I read to all of y'all. I've talked to the state people and they're going to let us go on to Circuit Court and make them turn the stuff over. I don't even have, we don't even have to hire a lawyer. They'll pay for it. Well, I think it's inappropriate. And I wouldn't be up here saying this if I didn't care and I didn't like y'all. But I'm going to bring it out. This is not clean. It doesn't look good. It is a form of crony capitalism, as we see it. Of, you know, I don't, I don't know what all of his political leanings are for president, but you know, one that's running right now is explaining all their quid pro quo and all these things. I got this for my vote and this for that vote going on. That's what upsets Kerwood, we see it creeping into our local government. Our local government has the most control over us than anything else. Diret's got to find you. State boys got it. You got time to get away by the time they get here from Columbia. But you guys are what run our life, day in, day out. York County's only taxing authority is property tax. I'm on the comprehensive land use plan and as we get into it, they'll begin to understand that the only avenue you have to gather funds is property taxes. If you don't watch them and guard every 50 cents, you ain't got nowhere else to go. Pennies for progress is a separate item. It's the only authority that you have is those property taxes. And you've got to guard them and make sure that you're not letting them go away. There is absolutely nothing wrong with Rock Hill raising their taxes on their people. Now, Rock Hill comes up and we're the great, high, mighty, they're not the economic engine of York County, y'all. You know good and darn well Charlotte is. Rock Hill is now one-fourth of the, they say they're 70, the last census they're 50,000 people in a population of 200,000. You represent three times the amount of people that they do. Why can't they raise their own taxes for this kind of stuff and get out of it? We got roads out there torn up, y'all. Been driving around out here lately? I think you have. We got the state fixing to lay a load on us. You got employees that might want to raise. If this is two or three million bucks, there goes their raise. And we have to add staff because this county is growing at a much bigger clip than they are. So I'm asking you to take the authority and take the higher moral stand and go, "Wait a minute. It's time for you to stand on your own two feet." Because, like I say, my whole life, I've watched it in the time I've been around, the roof on, the roof off, this, that, this, that. If you go back and look at the figures I look, they haven't done anything downtown. But a lot of people have gotten a lot of money for grants and commissions and fees and things to build up their property. Okay, it's time to tighten it up a little bit. The main gripe I had tonight, though, is the fact that we are having a public hearing. I know that it's being done to legally fulfill a requirement that you have to have it before you can pass this on. But I don't like having to come up here and just kind of grasp at these minute things because I don't have any meat, I don't have any numbers, I don't have any finances or stuff to look at. And I hope y'all will wait until you do before you make that decision. Because you might find it is the thing to do. Does anybody up here know, know the numbers? I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just asking you, how about tell us before you do it? That way, when we go to the polls, if we don't like the way you devote, we devote against you. Type works. Thank y'all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Reagan. Uh, next person opposed.
My name's Chuck Howell, 3421 Howell Road. You know, we've been reading this stuff about the TIF. It's been going on quite a while now. And I sent a letter, a free information request to the Rock Hill Economic Development and to the school district and New York Tech. I've yet to hear from New York Tech. I heard from the Economic Development Board via their lawyer telling me that he's not going to give me any information. Then I find out later that they didn't have any information. They have not been making, giving you yearly reports, year after year after year, as long as they've been in the TIF. Well, you see something. One thing I know about the TIF right now, there's language in there for internal audit. And that's what we need. We don't know what they've been spending the money on. Well, we do know that they invested into a couple of beer joints downtown and they've half of them failed. Folks, this is not right. Wait until you get all the information before you make the vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Alex?
My name's Alex Haley and I live in 3108 Lake Wally Drive. Kerwood and Reagan inspired me. I, you know, very simply, and I think, you know, I've been accused of being a damn Yankee. I grew up in Rochester, New York. Somebody wrote a book years ago, it's something along the lines, "You've learned everything you need to know by the time you're five." I mean, I think, you know, my mom and dad told me, and I figured it out by the time I was five, because I'd had enough whoopings to know that it was important, is that if you can't tell your mom and dad something that you've done or thinking about doing, you shouldn't do it. Okay? And bringing it forward 50 years, 60 years, you know, they call that accountability and clarity, whatever. And I mean, it's, the same story is true. I mean, if we ask the city of Rock Hill for information and they won't give it to you, okay? It's kind of the same thing we all learned when we were five from our mom and dads. If you can't look somebody in the eye and tell them what you're fixing to do, you probably shouldn't do it. So I just, I would remind you all of when you were five years old and your mom and dad looked you in the eye and said, you know, "If you can't tell me what you're fixing to do, you shouldn't probably do it." So, I mean, a lesson that I learned a long time ago, and I think it applies today, for you guys to act without the information, if they can't and won't give you the information. Golly, I shouldn't do it. There's something wrong. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else opposed? There being none, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, do we have a new motion?
I move that we pass second reading to continue further negotiation with the city of Rock Hill to make change to the intergovernment agreement between the city of Rock Hill and York County relating to the Texas corridor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Cox.
I appreciate the folks who came out to make public comment for coming out and sharing your thoughts. It is no secret that I have tremendous problems with how this process has worked. I decided to run for office because there were issues related to being given information and not getting information about a landfill that was going near my district. And it troubles me that we are continuing to do things that are not right. If we're going to consider something, then we should have a document for the public to have. We should have the information for them to see so that they know how to have public comment. Without having that, how do they even know how to make their comments known? I appreciate Dr. Chapel's comments especially. He is obviously a very impassioned speaker. He said he was speaking from his feelings. One thing that I do is I try to speak from facts. And I've spent a lot of time studying this and I cannot vote for this. And it's because of the facts. The question, and it seems like what's happening politically, is the question is becoming, "Does the county not support Rock Hill revitalization?" That's not the question. The question is, who should pay for it? And at this stage of the game, the county has supported downtown Rock Hill to the tune of over $8 million they've pledged to the downtown projects. Not only that, $16 million in road improvements, almost half a million dollars on the children's museum, $2 million to purchase property downtown for the new museum. So the county has made, by previous councils, a tremendous showing of support for downtown. The question is, should we approve a 10-year extension from 2029 to 2039? Should we approve at least another $2.8 million of taxpayer money from the county for this project? That's the question. So I want to set the record straight on that. The county has supported this and they've done it to the tune of over $30 million. The problem with this is that there's nothing new to justify 10 more years. We do not have a development agreement in place that we can look at. There's already $50 million in funds that has been pledged to this. There's no reason to make an extension. $2.8 million from 2029 to 2039 will not make or break this project. And the fact of the matter is, is that the city does have $5 to $6 million in profits from the enterprise fund annually that they could use to deal with that shortfall, if there is in fact a shortfall. You know, more fundamentally, what this question raises... You know, more fundamentally, what this question raises is what should we be spending taxpayer dollars on? I really do believe, and call me ideological, but I believe that taxpayer money should be spent on essential functions of government. Fire, police, roads, courthouse. If it's not an essential service, then the voters should vote on whether or not the money should be spent. Streetcars, the voters should be able to decide, do they want their money spent on a streetcar? $3 million parking decks for privately owned buildings, landscaping for downtown for winter housing, those kind of things are not essential. The voters should be voting on this. Maybe these things would make sense if we don't have tremendous issues right here on the council to deal with. We have a family courthouse and a double-wide trailer. That, you can't defend that. We have got to do something about that. County doesn't have enough money to repair our existing roads. We're facing a budget shortfall. There are employees who need increases. There are 21 new positions that are being recommended in the budget. Does it strike anyone as odd that we are going to have to put essential services of government on a referendum? We're going to have to vote on a courthouse, but we're not putting a streetcar question to the voters? That's not how government should work. And if I'm the only person up here who votes against this, I'm fine with that because I have to vote my conscience.
Thank you, Ms.
I still have a few more. As I see this, and we have done a tremendous amount of work, we're being asked to approve a $2.8 million blank check. Essentially, as it's written right now, the project, the TIF agreement would allow for any project to be done. Nothing in the TIF agreement requires that a certain number of jobs be created. Nothing in the TIF agreement requires that funds be spent on specific projects that will actually result in increased property tax values. There's no list of priority of projects. There's been no analysis done of what's happened in the past. Since 1988, there's been $19 million of municipal bonds for projects in the TIF issued. However, the county's increase in tax value has only been $80,000 a year. It does not take a rocket scientist to do the math. Again, I would encourage council members to base decisions on facts, not feelings. We don't need to point at one another, we don't need to pose blame. The question is, does this stand up to scrutiny? And at this stage of the game, it just doesn't. If, so I'm making it clear that I will not be voting for the TIF. If the rest of the council wants to move forward and does do that, I would hope that at a minimum that county funds are not being used for a streetcar. I'm hearing that from people, we should not do that. That the development agreement and how this money is going to be spent, that that be made public before it is done, that we be able to see it, and that the reports for accountability be done, and that we have a means to refuse to issue any money in that district if those reports are not done adequately.
Oh, you know, I couldn't wait to make your comments. First of all, it's a lot been said right here before us today, and it's a lot been said leading up to this moment. But I want to digress a little bit and go back to...
No, you're good. I was giving sign language to Robert.
To middle to late last year, when we had to send, you know, people talk about we're rushing to make a judgment. We had to send a letter somewhere between August and September last year, an official notification to the City of Rock Hill that we were objecting to this downtown TIF to make it official. Because had we not sent that letter during that course of time, we would have been supporting the downtown TIF by default. So we had to send that letter. That was August, September of last year. So when people say we're getting up here to rush to make a decision, we've had this before us coming up on a year now. Because this started, this didn't just start in October, November. This was on the table well before the turn of the year. So we've had time to review the information, get the information, and we should have taken a vote somewhere around October, November last year. But we got tangled up, some things were going on, and someone wanted to wait till some of the new council members got on. Well, when the new council members got on, some of those wanted, the two wanted to review some of the information, get brought up to speed. So we obliged and gave another opportunity to review information to get those guys up to speed so that they're comfortable voting for it or against it. And we vetted the process. We took about two and a half months to get new information, to read information, to talk to Rock Hill EDC, bring the mayor in, bring the city manager in, bring the Knowledge Park group in or representative to speak to new council members as well as sitting council members. So to say we're sitting up here rushing to judgment, to extend the TIF, I wasn't on council in 84, 94, 2004. So to say we're spending this money, that money was spent, we're not responsible for what they've done in those years. But since I've been on council, this is the first time the Knowledge Park District has come up, or the TIF corridor, the textile corridor has come up for a type of extension. That agreement is already in place. What we're looking at is a 10-year extension of the one that's already sitting. And it's been vetted and valued somewhere around two-plus million dollars. If we extend the agreement, this is the additional money potentially, at the minimum, that will be foregoing for the additional 10 years. But right now, this TIF is in place to 2029 regardless of whether we voted up or down. There's nothing we can do about that. And if you want to blame previous councils, previous city, I mean, county managers or whoever, you feel free to put the blame. But we had no part in doing it. That agreement is already in place. And to address the comment about people lining people's pockets on campaign donations, boy, that struck a nerve. Because if anybody was lining any pockets, those, that information would be not listed on my state ethics commission. So to sit up here to say it's something unethical, had I put that money in my pocket and didn't report it, you best your bottom dollar, you can stand here and say I'm doing something unethical. So if you have a question about my financial reporting, feel free to call the state ethics commission, tell them to launch an investigation, whatever you got to do. But that money is reported, that is not my personal spending money, those are campaign donations. So to say, for someone to sit here and say I'm doing something unethical, I have people who supported my campaign who don't support the Knowledge Park. So it's not like someone is writing checks to swing votes. And I come out and went on the radio and said I would not support the Knowledge Park if some things don't get done in my district. And someone accused me of that being Chicago politics. But I want to see things being done in my district, in other districts in Rock Hill with the taxpayers' money. But I totally resent the fact or the accusation that I'm doing something unethical. But I represent my district. And first and foremost, I always find myself on the end representing the last, the least, and the left out. I don't represent the money boys. My district is not the most wealthiest district in this county. And if you look around my district, from restaurants to housing values to a lot more things, we're not at the top of the chain. So I want to make sure those, the last, the least, and the left out get taken care of. And if I have to use some leverage to get the City of Rock Hill to go into some of our lower-income areas to do some work, to bring up the stormwater drainage system, to pave the roads, to have police protection, to community policing and lighting or whatever it is, because I want my area to look like the Dave Lyles, the Cherry Rose, the Manchesters. And if you can sit up here and say someone is doing something unethical, I take highly offense to that. But I'm going to move on from that one. And one more thing is council did not ask a certain individual to look into this TIF corridor and report back to us. Maybe a certain individual council member asked another individual to take that role on. But this sitting body did not ask any citizen to go out and bring us information back. Because we have staff to do that, we have council members who can do that, and we have committees that can do that. We did not appoint a one-man pony show to go around Rock Hill to get the information to bring back to us. So we want to be clear, I want to be clear about that because if it happened, I wasn't here that night. I wasn't a part of that group to instruct the individual to do that. And we talk about the railcar situation. Things that the city...
Street car.
Was that?
Street car.
Street car. The streetcars deal, or the trolley, or whatever they're looking to possibly bring. I've had conversations with the City of Rock Hill, that's not in their immediate plans to do. They don't know the long-term cost or what it would take to happen. But that streetcar would be approved, an approved expense item to put in if they choose to do so. They haven't told us this was a number one item, or number two item, or number five item. But right now, they don't know if that component to the TIF district would be feasible to do. So we can't get caught up on possibly them using that avenue. But the state law requires that. If they choose to do that, by state law, they're able to use funds to do that. Now, we can make stipulation as to what we would like our funds to be used on or not to be used on. But that doesn't mean they couldn't use their TIF money that they're foregoing annually, or the school district's money annually to put that in. And we talk about the reporting mechanism. Is it on the City of Rock Hill? Or is that on the county staff, or county council members, or county manager, whether they got the reports or not? I think that blame can kind of be on both sides of the road. If we didn't, if we didn't ask for the reports, maybe that's on the county council or county manager. If the city didn't send the reports, I'm sure part of it's on them. But we're working to address some of these concerns. And if you're privy to some of the items we sent requesting, we specifically addressed reporting mechanisms. We specifically addressed the trolley car situation or streetcar. So we're working to address those things to firmer what we're about to enter into, into this extension. And yes, true, we don't have the development agreement, they haven't had a signed agreement. And it's customary that you don't release official documents until you have a signed signature on them. That's just like if we're negotiating with a company, we don't make it public what our agreement is until we have a signed agreement with a particular company to move here. So there's nothing underhanded going on, and I certainly resent some of the innuendos or tactics that being brought here. Yes, it's a very emotional issue. The room was dead silent when Mr. Chapel got up to speak. I could about hear a rat piss on cotton. It was that quiet. But that's the respect that he gets.
He's rubbing off on you.
That's the respect that he gets. He's a passionate person. I served with him for four years. He's helped me out on some things, I've helped him out on some things. But this is a real good component for the City of Rock Hill. When you look at areas like the Greenville area that took their area and revitalized it, you look at Durham, North Carolina, they took their area of old mills and revitalized it. While we can't have that special component in downtown Rock Hill, like I say, I wasn't on council in 84, 94, 2004. So if anyone is to blame for that, feel free to spread it thin, spread it thick, however you want to do it. But I'm wanting to make sure that we put something in place since I've been on council. One is in my district, it's a good project, one that was well on the way before I got on council. And if we don't do anything with it, the taxpayers of York County won't get any money. So my involvement or my concern is, if you put something in, eventually you'll get something out. And we've put something in, and for us to turn our backs on it now over an additional, I think it was two-point-something million dollars, and we've already put in 40? You do the percent on that when it asks, how much increase is that? Two million up against 40-plus million we've already put in from infrastructure to pennies money and what we've put in so far. So if you do the math, it's not going to be that great of increase that we're foregoing for the taxpayers. But at the end of the day, when it's all said and done, and when this thing is built out, it's going to generate that type of money and then some when York County starts to collect the full payout or the full revenue generating tax base that it's going to create, let alone the jobs. And I think I've kind of gone a little too far, but I did want to address just a few comments of that. And hopefully we can get everything ironed out with the negotiation part and have a final agreement to when we come back in a couple of weeks. So, Ms. Chairman, that's all I have. I will be supporting the extension.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Winkler?
Where to start here?
Let me just remind, I don't want to interrupt you, but just let me remind everybody, we do have eight more public hearings to go.
I'm going to stay much more brief. You know, when I was elected, I tried to tell everyone, I tried to keep an open mind on everything that comes before me and look at the facts and make the best decision I can based on what's presented. I was happy when I was put on the, or asked to be on the committee to review the TIF because I did not know a lot about that other than, you know, what I'd read in the paper and actually what I had seen from Reagan and some others when I was sitting out there before I actually got to sit up here. And I had real concerns, and I still have some concerns. I've told city officials and everyone else that, that I've talked to. One of my major concerns, you know, with, I think TIFs are a necessary tool in this state with the taxing environment we have, just like fee and lieu of is a necessary tool. My problem with them is when they become a perpetual funding agreement, which I think the downtown TIF has already done. We're talking tonight about the textile corridor TIF, which is a different thing. Previous councils have voted multiple times to extend downtown. And I have concern with that, that if we extend again here, you know, personally, if you let me sit up here for 10 more years, I can tell you I won't vote to extend it again, but I, you know, I may not be up here in two years. I don't know. But that's one of the problems when councils rotate off, they intend on this to not be continued to extend, and the next council maybe extends it. I kept an open mind, and the city has given us volumes of information that we asked for, reports and everything else along the way. And, you know, I felt like there were some, a few things we needed to negotiate that would allow me to support it, and we have been negotiating those. But I can tell you, there are still a couple of points that we're not getting much leeway from the city on a couple of things we've asked for that are pretty much sticking points. And I'll support it tonight to give the city one more time to come around on the things that we've said, you know, some of the sticking points we have. And if they don't, I'm voting no next time. So I will support it tonight, but I will make sure that, you know, I think, I think everyone knows, but there are certain things that we've said that, you know, have to be agreed on or else. And I think we're getting to that point now. One more time, one more negotiation with the city, and, you know, if it doesn't happen, my vote's no. But tonight, I'll support it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Johnson? I'm just going down the line.
I am in favor of allowing second reading to happen, for the only intent to allow negotiations to continue for another two weeks. I have said privately to other council members and to county staff and the county attorney what the conditions were to get my final vote, and I will say them now. I have, one of my major requirements will be that we are made whole. That in 2029, when the original TIF expires, that we be brought forward on taxes and that we just not be continued to allow the 2004 tax rate to extend all the way out into 2039. I'm going to require that the city have an agreement in place that if they are 60 days late with their reporting, and they are given written notice by the county, and within 30 days of that written notice, they have not supplied us the reports that are required per this agreement, that the county can unilaterally remove itself from the TIF. I firmly believe if you're going to give them a carrot, you also are going to need a stick to require them to do the right thing. And no matter whose fault it is, neither, we do have not had the information over the past few years. I would also like to see a, while I would like to see a cap, I have seen some of the arguments on how, there are several issues involved in that. But we have a duty to protect the best interest of York County citizens. I don't interfere in the City of Tugakay, I don't interfere in the town of Fort Mill. They rarely come and interfere with us. But we need to make sure that the money is being spent wisely. I don't want, I am not elected official in Rock Hill. If they have a trolley, they have a trolley. That's between the voters who live in Rock Hill and their town council. If you're unhappy with it, you should vote out your town council. You shouldn't ask this body to overrule them. But what we should do is we should make sure the $2.8 million... But what we should do is we should make sure the two point eight million dollars is being spent well. We should have our reporting. We should be able to be made whole so that we don't lose two point eight million dollars. We, you know, the investment is, is much less. There was one other issue. My mind is draw, I've drawn a blank on it. Those are my, those are my major issues. And in order for me to vote yes on a third reading, I'm going, I'm going to need these negotiations to take a turn. I keep reading that they're, that they're going well. I don't get that feeling that they're going well. And I, they need to turn, and we need, we need, we need Rock Hill to, to do its part. And if, if they want us to do our part, then I expect that to happen in the next two weeks. And hopefully, this time crunch of only having two weeks will be a pressure point that will allow us to get a good deal done. Oh, last point, and this is very important to me. I want to see this agreement. I want to see the agreement between them and the developer. I don't care if I see it in an executive session alone. I don't, I don't, I don't mind that. I, I understand the idea you don't allow out contracts. We would not allow a contract out into the public prior to it being approved. But if the county is, the county in essence is a partner in this contract. We have a right to know what the contract says. We have a right to know who's getting paid, who's not getting paid, and how that money goes. We, we need those things. I think those are kind of the three major sticking points that I've heard numerous councilmen raise. I thought it was important that it be said publicly so that we can kind of skip the negotiations are going well, and start actually talking about the things that we're asking for. So I look forward to a third reading and all of those issues being addressed. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Anderson?
Imagine, if you will, with me. I've stood off at a distance and tried to keep an open mind. Let's picture approaching a rodeo. And, uh, and again, I've tried to enter this with an open mind. I wanted to consider a, a very unconventional TIF, if you would. A TIF that would absolutely be different because it would have required guarantees, benchmarks, and proof of, of accomplishment like we've, some of the others have mentioned. But as I've gotten closer and closer to, to that rodeo, I realize I need some hip, hip boots. So at this point now, I'm putting them on for caution, and I honestly feel like I've, you know, I've dirtied up my boots a little bit, so. And I feel like that at this point, it is time to reconsider and don't be bitter. In other words, you know, we're, some, uh, one of the previous councilmen had mentioned as far as the least of these, if you will, that lives around the perimeter of this potential development area. Knowledge Park, so forth, and all around it. Who knows how big it'd be, maybe before it's over. I wanted it to, I wanted this agreement, and like I said, I entered it with an open mind, but not so much that my brain would fall out. So I wanted it to not adversely affect lower-income people. And you got all around the perimeter here, you've got blacks, whites, Hispanics. You've got maybe your parents. Maybe, maybe somebody's parents in here lives around this area. And what happens when you do a lot of these TIFs? And I'll reiterate what I, what I've known now for a good while, and someone, uh, I forget who it was, but somebody mentioned it again, and might have been Reagan, I don't know, but back in October or so, that you have artificially inflated assessed property values in due time, ultimately causing lower-income people to have to leave. You got your parents, maybe my parents, may end up having to lose their home just for the sake of private development and somebody else gaining. It's a, it's a backdoor way of eminent domain, as far as I'm concerned. It's a slick way. So I'm getting to the point now where I, I, I don't like what I'm seeing, and, and that with a sound conscience, I cannot support it. And early on, let me, let me reiterate this. One of the first times we talked about this, I asked right off the bat, what about the possibility? And like I said, I believe in TIFs, fee lots, and so forth, where you can lock down some guarantees. But in this case, one of the first things I mentioned was private investors was the answer. And to me, I feel like there's a lack of enthusiasm, enthusiasm and incentive to go out there and get them. And I cannot, with a sound conscience, in this particular case, support public money going for this project.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Williams?
Yes, thank you. I, uh, when we first started talking about this last August, or whenever it was, there's a couple of questions that, comes down to a couple of simple questions. For me, but I wanted, uh, there's been some things said tonight, and I guess I'd like to address a, a couple of them. One thing said that, I just want to make, make it known that we're not giving up money that we're already getting. We are not, uh, we're collecting, the money that we're collecting on these properties now, we will continue to collect on property now. In fact, we've been collecting on it for ten years, and we hadn't collected the increment. What TIF stands for, or T I F, is Tax Increment Financing. So it's a way to finance growth, and, uh, and fee loads are a way that, that, that we have done some investment in economic development, and the, the TIFs are as well. But, uh, but basically, what we agree to do is keep collecting the same amount of taxes, taxes for thirty years. And then, uh, the development entity, in this case, the city of Rock Hill is going to use that increment, is going to, going to take out some bonds and make some public improvements. And bank that those public improvements are going to drive some, uh, private investment to, to generate some taxes to pay that back. And at the end of those thirty years, uh, we have, uh, we have new, new taxes that are going to everybody. And that's the way it works in theory, as has been pointed out before. We've had some previous ones that didn't go so good. And that's true, but one thing that hadn't been pointed out, we've had some previous ones that did go so, did go good, and we have taxes that we are not, uh, that we're collecting, that we're got properties we're collecting on taxes now that I believe without private investment, we would still be collecting the same thing that we collected on, in the beginning. And when we first started talking about this, the, uh, uh, we were talking about an extension, not, not a new one. So some of the questions that were brought up in the public, I think, would have been good questions to ask had it been a new one, but this one was not a new one. This was an extension. So the questions came to me, what am I get, what am, okay, to extend it ten more years, what am I going to give up? Well, the first thing I'm going to give up is the, is the new value of the taxes, the increment from two thousand twenty-nine to two thousand thirty-nine. That ten years' worth of taxes on stuff that has developed at this particular time. Uh, the good news in, in negotiations with the city of Rock Hill, looks like we're going to take that part out of it. And, uh, when it, when, if, if that's the case, then, then, then what are we giving up? The way I look at it, there's not a whole lot we're giving up at that point. So then the question comes to me, when they, when they make that the whole, as, as Mr. Johnson referred to it, there's not a whole lot that, that we're giving up at that point. But what, uh, so what's it cost us? Then, then it goes back to the private investment question. If I believe that it's going to develop privately, I don't think we should extend it. I don't think it's going to develop privately. I think if we don't extend it, I mean, the reason to extend it ten more years is, and I think they need ten more years to secure the, uh, to, to, to secure the financing. And then, and you had to have those, those last ten years to pay it off. And there, when they first started talking to us about last Ag, last August, they came up with a bunch of reasons as to why, why it hadn't been done yet, and why we needed extension. Uh, you know, whether those reasons are valid or not, here we are. This is where we're going looking forward. Uh, private investment, one thing that was looking forward, and, uh, one, one thing that they, that they have done, and we haven't seen the agreement. But my understanding is there's a, there is a, uh, it's going to be a public-private partnership. And we do have private investment, but that, that investment would not invest without public investment. At least, that's what I believe. If I believe that it would, I would probably vote no. If I believed that, uh, that we would have, that these properties would be worth more on their own in the interim without the public, the public investment, I would vote no. I, uh, I believe that this is a good investment. I do, I do acknowledge it's a risk because of the previous failures. But, uh, but the track record is pretty good in other ones. And that's why the, my understanding, that's one reason that the other, that the other, that the other agreements are mentioned is because they have or will go ahead and end those, and, and we'll start collecting those, collecting the increments early as we start this one. But that's, uh, thanks for your time, and thanks for your, thanks, everybody, for your concern because, um, public, public, public involvement is what we need.
And that's a good point to end it on. I appreciate that comment. I know it was mentioned, why are we having a public hearing tonight? And one reason, main reason, is the staff needed it for the timeframe you have to have to have a public hearing and have it announced. And the negotiations are kinetic. They're in the process of occurring as we speak. So I thought it wouldn't hurt to just get some, um, private input and just hear from the citizens and, uh, hear what they have to say. We probably will not have this on the next council meeting because it probably needs to have another public hearing once we come up with some finite issues that I pretty much agree with all the pros and the cons. And that's what we're negotiating, trying to evolve through. And I think there are some sticking points that still haven't been met that we have to get addressed. Hopefully, people at the city are listening right now because I think I counted a majority of council members that feel like those issues are a make or break. But, um, certainly, I support the success of this. I think it's going to require a lot of private investment to make it happen. But, uh, I want to give this thing its final shot to make it. So that being said, I'm going to support this, and hopefully, we'll have some good results in the next two weeks in our discussions. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no?
No.
Aye.
Well, we're at the second public hearing. We only have eight more to go. So, uh, rezoning, consider first reading and public hearing, a case number fifteen thirteen. Bear with me a second here as I check some of the information. The zoning request for a major amendment to approximately one hundred and six acres of one hundred and fifty acre planned development. And, um, that being said, anybody here want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Move to close.
We got a motion to close. Do we have a second? Discussion, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Discussion. Yes, ma'am. Well, Ms. Cox, and then Mr. Johnson.
I'll defer.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
This is in my district on Highway one sixty. My understanding, recalling it a major amendment, and the major amendment is that we are allowing detached garages as opposed to attached garages. Am I correct?
Mr. Johnson, um, what they're essentially allowing is it's already permitted in our code. They just didn't call it out in the P D. So within a detached garage, it would be a, could be an office, it could be, it could have a bathroom, it'd be heated living space.
Okay, but it couldn't be, I mean, obviously, they have declarations, CCRs. You're not going to be able to permit it and things like that. And we're not increasing the amount of houses in this neighborhood.
No, this is all, like I said, this is already permitted in the code. Just when you develop a, a planned development, the use is not to be spelled out. If you don't include the use in the P D, then in order to change that, you have to come back before the council and change it through a major amendment. This is already allowed in our current code.
What triggers the Fort Mill School District's impact fee? Is it the water, or is it the power on those garages, detached garages?
I think it's just the, um, it's per unit. It's based on a per unit. So we collect, I believe, at the latter stage of that process before C O is issued, have to submit for the, uh, the twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee.
Will they be able, I guess what I'm asking is-
That's going to impact this. This won't impact-
Those attached garages won't be treated as a secondary? Because I know some in Baxter have been, where people-
They do. That is a, that is a technique they use in Baxter, but it's not considered a dwelling unit on its own. It's an accessory. Can't be used as an accessory dwelling or office or whatever. Choose either of those.
Ms. Cox?
I think my question was going towards what, why is, why are we calling it a major amendment? If the effect of it, if the effect of it-
It's a major amendment. We have spelled out in our ordinance, major, minor amendments.
Right, I guess I'm getting to the practical point of it. Is it, is it going to be major in terms of what we've been thinking up here about density maximums? We're, we're not dealing with density issues. We're not dealing with an additional use that's going to cause tremendous issue. It's inside, it, it fits within the comprehensive plan. I didn't see any notes in here about school district commenting. Some of, some of our rezonings have specific comments on those, and there were none in that. So I want to make sure that we've covered our bases on that because clearly, this is an area where we've got to pay close attention to it to avoid any detrimental effects of, of rapid growth. So I mean, that's what we're, that's what I'm looking to you to tell me, is that we're not, we're not facing any issues like that.
We're not facing the issues like that, and it's major because we're adding a use. Whenever you add a use to our planned developments per our code, you have to take it through a, a major amendment process. Although it might seem very minor in scale, a use change can have some effects. This one in particular, I don't see it, just because it's already allowed in, in used by right districts in the county already. And C C and ours, like you were saying, Mr. Johnson, was that, uh, those will clean up a lot of the other issues that, that might be feared.
Just want to clarify, um, in reading this, you've basically said it, but I just want to very clearly say there will be no kitchens allowed in this, correct? That bathrooms, that type thing, but no kitchen? I think I read that in our notes.
It's in there.
That was in our, our notes, specifically kitchens.
Send the comments, yeah.
It's written?
Yeah, so it doesn't, doesn't appear that kitchens would be allowed.
Which would keep it from being able to be-
Yeah.
Be a separate rental quarter without a kitchen would be.
And I have, uh, the applicant representing land design is, is here for any additional questions that you might have for them. He can provide some more detail on that, if that's okay.
Any other questions required?
I, I would ask that the, someone from StandPac give me a call between now and second reading.
Okay. We would.
So that being said, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose no? Next item, rezoning action, consider first reading, public hearing, case number fifteen twelve. Rezoning property from R U D to R C one at fifty-seven sixty, Highway five fifty-seven in the Lake, Lake Wiley community. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm John Maxwell for Evergreen Land Partners. This is a twelve-acre piece that, uh, some of you might remember the rezoning a twenty-acre parcel last year. As part of staff's comment about that, they were concerned about connectivity. And so as part of that, I approached an adjoining property owner about tying their piece into this piece, the twenty-acre piece. Twenty-acre piece, if you can call it this dashed line, this is the piece that was rezoned last year. This is the piece that I'm asking to have rezoned to the same, same zoning classification now. Uh, the reason for this particular acre is there's a creek that runs right down through here, which makes it a really nice geographical body point. Uh, and this twelve-acre piece really does fit in well with the twenty now. It all geographically fits together. Uh, it's, uh, it's going to be thirty-two lots total, twelve new lots to go with the previous twenty. Uh, density of one lot per acre, thirty percent open space. It's a really nice project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Anderson, you got any questions for him?
Uh, I, I just want to re, or, I'm going to make sure. I'd rather be safe than sorry. When this was rezoned last year, it was rezoned from what to what?
Um, same, same thing we're asking.
Same as you're looking at me?
From R U D to R C one.
Okay, all right.
Same, same zoning classification on both parcels.
Any further questions? Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Anybody else here to speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Do we have a new motion?
Yes, I'd like to motion to go ahead and approve first reading as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, rezoning action, consider first reading and public hearing on case number Rezoning property from BD2 to RC1 at 32 Quell Side Court in the Lake Wylee Community. Anybody here to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Joe Baird, I'm representing Mr. Allen Morrison tonight. He was called away to New Hampshire and couldn't be with us tonight. This rezoning consists of, excuse me, approximately one-tenth of an acre. It has no negative impacts on the community. Positive impacts would be creating a waterfront property from a property that is currently water view. Approximately 75% of this property is underwater. Mr. Morrison desires to have his dock in front of his property over land he owns underwater. In order to do that, in order to purchase the one-tenth of an acre of property, we have to rezone the one-tenth of an acre to make it consistent with the property where his house sits. It's probably going to be the simplest rezoning that you've ever seen.
We can use more of those. Thank you, sir. Mr. Anderson, questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else here want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed?
Move to close.
Got a motion to close? Do we have a second?
Second.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Do we have a new motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a new motion to rezon as written of item number four.
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Next item, rezoning action, consider first reading and public hearing, case number 1510. Location 3949 Bay Ridge Road in the Rock Hill Community. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Blackwell.
Yes, sir.
Members of council. My name's Greg Gujar, I'm with Patent Development Company. My address is 472 Grand Oakway in Moore, South Carolina. We have the parcel in question currently under contract. I've learned a lot about York County over the last about two months in working on this project. I've spent an awful lot of time in the Mount Gallant Road area as well as other areas of York County and I've learned a couple of things about York County. One, I hear an ongoing issue about traffic and I hear an ongoing issue about your schools. And I've got a project that I think would help with both of those. I'm trying to bring a Dollar General development to the Mount Gallant Road area. Currently Dollar General has about 11,700 locations open nationwide. They're a Fortune 500 company and they open about 700 locations nationwide annually. This is quite an economic engine across the country and we'd like to help in bringing that to York County. Currently in York County, there are 15 open locations across York County. And so this is quite an economic engine already in York County and we do that in small bits and pieces so that we don't have a huge impact on traffic and everything else in one given area. So we're kind of a silent engine that could. We've got $250,000 in property taxes that we currently pay in York County and we employ over 100 people. We have targeted this intersection in this area of your county partly because of your traffic issues that you've got on Selene's and we are not a store that you drive out of your way to visit. We've identified housing around this particular location and we are proposing this location to serve the people that already live right in that community and to save them the drive down to Selene's Road and therefore actually decrease the traffic impacts on Mount Gallant that you currently have. But as we went through the planning commission and as I got to know people in York County, we know we've got a lot of different things going on at that intersection. We've got a convenience store that was expanded a couple of years ago as a neighbor to this parcel and they didn't necessarily do the right things. They have not managed their water runoff, their lights shine very bright across the back of the property, they don't manage their trash collection. So it's an issue some of the time to the neighbors. There's a very good seafood restaurant across the street and then on my other side is a recycling facility run by the county, I believe. So there's already commercial energy around this parcel, I'd be right in the middle of it and that's where we think the right place is to go. Now behind this site are residential houses that back up to the lake and we've got to be sensitive to that and we know that. And therefore I've spent numerous nights literally knocking on doors through these communities to make sure that we're listening to the residents that live around this and addressing their concerns. And just very quickly, I want to share with you what we've heard. One, we've heard that they do not want access off of Bay Ridge Road. That's a residential road that goes down the side of the site. It slopes about 40 feet from the top of the site to the back of the site and they want that road to stay residential. Also, they do not want signage on the corner and so this is our access that we're proposing on Mount Gallant Road, keep commercial on a commercial road. We also hear about traffic concerns on Mount Gallant Road and therefore we're willing to commit to council tonight that we will add a turning lane for our turns off of Mount Gallant Road whether South Carolina DOT requires it or not. And so we will add that and we've made that a part of our plan. Of course, we'll do modern water retention in the back so that there will not be water runoff to those back parcels or to the lake like our neighbor currently has his issue. We also though have heard that we need to make it attractive and we need to keep the back of it residential. In fact, most of the people that I talked to didn't say they were necessarily against it. They said, well, if it had to be developed for something, maybe a Dollar General would be okay, but I'd just rather it stay trees. And certainly I understand that sentiment and so this is a three-acre parcel, it's over three acres. We generally fit on an acre and a half and therefore with deed restrictions, when we purchase the property and conditional zoning from you guys, we're willing to leave the back acre and a half all natural. We will not disturb the trees on the back of this site. We will put our modern detention here and we will do extensive landscaping. The exhibit that I have for you guys actually outlines exactly what type of bushes, what types of trees we'll put and it'll look like this. So it'll be very attractive and it is way above the standards that York County generally requires. We're also not going to do our standard metal box. We're also not going to pick architecture that just complies with your standards, but maybe it in the prettiest. That's a neighborhood area and we recognize that it needs to look more like a general store or something warm and so we're proposing to use a hardy board type material and to keep it in the style of some rendering like this. So we've spent an extensive amount of time listening to the neighbors and trying to address their concerns. I have a memo here that I'm more than happy to distribute to you that we would like these following conditions put on the rezoning if approved, that we will keep the back natural, we will do a turning lane, we will do the building upgrades, we will do the landscaping outlined so that we're, you know, that we don't, that we fulfill what we say we're going to do.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else here in favor? Anybody opposed? Yes, sir. I'll just catch you as the hands go up. Terry?
Good evening, Terry Hutchinson, 1514 West Lakewood Drive in Rock Hill. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Cox, gentlemen. I stand before you as a resident of the Lakewood Community. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition of the zoning request, 1510, which we're talking about. While I realize all too well the benefits of a new business coming to Rock Hill in York County, that existing, but adding a new location, I feel the negatives outweigh the positives in this case. Your staff denied it for very good reasons. I'd like to add a few more reasons. First is the traffic. With the past growth and future growth, it is getting increasingly difficult to get out of my own development in the Lakewood section. Furthermore, there's a team of five to six semi-tractor trailers that run that road every day, five days a week. They're on a cycle five to six times. Sometimes they're running in a convoy of three to four trucks. They're out of Gastonia. They're a metal recycling company that's cutting corners, cutting their trips short. The next point I'd like to make is in regards to the location. The location is close to a very sharp curve. Some of us in that area would call it a blind curve, dead man's curve. How many countless accidents we've seen almost happen out there. I watched the van go driving through the field there in front of Howard's Automotive a couple of times because they were going too fast, which brings up a point, speed limit on that road. Yes, it's supposed to 35, but nobody does that, especially those trucks. The other point that I'd like to make is the small family business right there on the opposite corner. They just remodeled that, the river stop. They just remodeled it not too long ago. This business, Dollar General, will have a direct impact on their business. I'd rather support a small business than a conglomerate. So with these points, I'd like to request that the board deny this petition for a zoning change if they want that. There's two prime locations for them, a mile and a half either side. The old Fish Hook Restaurant, which is the big barn, or PJ's Grill and Market, which Ryan Hart's been trying to sell for years and years and years. So if they want, I've got no business with them coming to Mount Gallant, just not there. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. And just to recognize, Terry, Mr. Hutchinson's on the Rock Hill School Board.
He was not able to make their meeting this week because of a trip. I'm glad you were able to make ours.
Anybody else opposed?
Last week.
Opposed? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Ravinya Miller. I live at 3460 Lake Wylee Drive. I love Dollar General. I shop there a lot, but I have a problem with where they want to go. Like the other gentleman said, a mile, a half a mile down the other way or the other way is good. That's right at a corner, that seafood restaurant, someone has driven out of that restaurant before and gotten killed. People drive down that little road like they're going to a Speedway. I myself have called the sheriff saying, you've got to do something with these people, how fast they're going and the stop signs they're running because people will run those stop signs right there at the seafood restaurant like they're not even there. There are just, there's just too much traffic. This is a cut through for people coming from York, they'll cut across to go over to Selene's to hit 77. Hans Mill is a cut through. Anyone that lives on that side will cut through that road to go through. So there's an awful lot of traffic. There's three schools that we support, one right off of Twin Lakes that is right close to Mount Gallant and then the other one which is Mount Gallant Elementary in Dutchland Creek. Like I said, Dollar General, go mile either way, I'll be there every day probably, but I can't support this at all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Opposed? I thought I, David, go ahead. I thought I saw another hand over there somewhere, but I don't see it right now. Opposed? Going, going, Mr. Angel.
Good evening, I'm David Angel. 39 Lake Wylee Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina, Garden Spot of America. In addition to living on Lake Wylee Drive, which is right behind this, I also own the 10 acres, my wife and I own the 10 acres, not adjoining this property, but one lot over all along Lake Wylee Drive. Basically just about Bay Ridge, I own 10 acres and then Pradeep Singh, Dr. Singh, who is not here tonight, owns from there down to the boat landing. So we have a very vested interest in this. Before I say anything else, let me say that I've been very, very impressed with Greg and the people from Patent. They have done their homework and they have made every effort to listen to our concerns and address our concerns and for that, I wanted to know, we really appreciate that. I'd like to welcome them to our community and do business here. However, to echo what others have said, this ain't the right spot. I come out of that intersection two, three times a day and it is just, it's a very dangerous spot. People fly around that turn and yes, with a parking lot there, it would get rid of the trees and give us a little more visibility, but that's not slowing the people down. And I don't know if the turn lane would help or hurt because if somebody was in the turn lane, would I be able to see around them? I think the idea of having a nicer blend, something like he said, with a hardy plank, that's what we need more of instead of just the plain old metal buildings. But again, it's back to that location. This is my cove, my children and I swim in that cove and there's runoff coming down there from, on top of that hill from the BP station is coming down because a berm was not instructed to be put in place. We trust the staff to do that, to make sure that our land and our waters are protected. Well, in my opinion, they, y'all, they let us down because now there's nothing to slow the waters coming down that hill. They've offered to put in retaining pond, very much appreciate that and with many of the things that he has proposed tonight, perhaps they reapplied with some of those things that might be more palatable, but you can't move the location. That is a very dangerous intersection, it's so hard to get in and out of there with the fish, I mean with the restaurant people trying to come out, people coming in and out, especially with boats, because that's the last fuel stop before you go into, you have to use a boat landing. So boats and RVs are coming in and out of there all the time. This added traffic, I wish y'all had straightened that road out before letting River Stop come in. That road needs to be straightened out and more visibility put in place, but that's going to be a very expensive process. I hate that it's going to take several more people getting killed on that intersection before something is done, but something needs to be done besides putting another structure on that particular parcel. I would welcome them to our community. I hope it would go a little further down, like they said, at the two locations mentioned previous. I use them. One of my concerns also I must address and that is their development shows great landscaping. Unfortunately, some of their locations after Dollar General has come in, they have not maintained that landscaping. You go over to Cherry Road and Highway 5, it was beautiful when it went in there, it's not so beautiful now. That would be one of our concerns in devaluing our property. All those lots along the, lakefront lots from up by the museum or all the way up to River Hills, all the way down to the dam, an acre lot that's going to run you three to $400,000 on the tax map. What is this going to do to the devaluation of our property if we have runoff coming down in our cove and the reputation starts that it's not a good place to be? I ask you to decline this at this time. Again, my highest compliments to the developer because we need more developers like that who try and do it right and work with us as neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Now I believe that was the, I didn't see any more hand, yes, sir. Mr. Miller.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, I really didn't come over here to speak, I just came to support and I believe if you ask for a show of hands, you would find that most of the people here are to, are here supporting the fact that we should not have a Dollar General or any other commercial activity in the area there on Mount Gallant Road. Mount Gallant has become a very busy area between 2.4 miles where the... Between 2.4 miles where the Museum of York County and the Dutchman Middle School, down to the location of the other middle school on Lake Hollis Road, between those two, there's two churches, there's three schools, there's four businesses. There's the Museum of York County, there's the Collection Center for recycle, there's a county park. All of this is thrown into a congested area already. I think if you took a motion among the people who live out there, they wish that stuff, stuff wasn't there now, because it does cause a lot of congestion and does cause a lot of problems. That curve, it's a, it's like an S curve. If any of you've been out to what we call the river, as you approach the curve and you go around where the gas station is, it's blind. If you go a little bit further, it's blind again, and, and whenever you try to pull out a side roads, you take your life into your hands sometimes because there is a lot of activity. In particular, not only from the big trucks that are coming down there, but also from the activity that's going on with the park. You have these vehicles, these $300,000, $400,000 vehicles that are going down to that park, which the county has done a tremendous job to make that park much better than it was two or three years ago, and it certainly is, blends a little bit better into our community. But as David said, we have quite a, an investment in our homes. We, we bought homes, we bought land, built huge homes or homes that were large for one reason, so we weren't in the middle of, of a commercial area. And now the commercial area is coming to us, and, and it could do nothing but cause problems. Right now, traffic coming out of that area is backed up from Selene's Road to India Hook Road every morning. You have more developments that you're putting into that area. It doesn't look like we're ever going to get a bridge across to I-77 on India Hook Road, so it's, it's just, it's, it's not a good idea. It's not a good idea for the citizens in that area. It's not a good eye for, idea for the county, because when our values of our homes go down, that's going to be less taxes that will come to the coffers here in York County. So I, I would ask you, please do not endorse this. Please do not let them bring more activity into an area that already is critically hurt by, by commerce. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go right, I was gonna, I, I saw some people wanting to raise their hand, and I was gonna let them do it.
Okay, anybody that is, that is against this from our neighborhood?
Raise your hand, raise your hand.
Stand, stand up works fine, too. Thank you, I appreciate that. So I think that, I think that covers, thank you.
I thought I gave my name. Alan Miller, 3460 Lake Wally Drive.
You have a nice voice, you should be in radio.
And I, and I believe that takes care of everybody. I didn't see any more hands, so I would ask a motion to
Who's close?
Close public hearing, got a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. This is my district, and I'm going to request that the council make a motion to deny. When I first saw this, I said, whoa, I don't think that's a good location, right, by all these million, million dollar homes on Lake Wally Drive. I appreciate what the developers tried to do, but with the traffic, the concerns there, the legitimate concerns, all the factors that were brought up, I won't repeat them, but it appears that the neighbors seem to agree with my first gut impression, so I would ask that a councilman present a motion to, to deny this rezoning.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, sir.
I just want to make a quick comment. I was going, my good friend Alan out there, I noticed Krista didn't say TV, she said radio.
That's dirty. Dirty.
So, so I guess it's all kind of how you look at it, it's a compliment on one side, but I just want, I just wanted to say that.
I like to look at the positive.
Uh, Mr. Williams?
I'd just like to echo Mr. Angel's welcome to Patton to develop in York County. They did go, go out of the way, I think, to, to do it, and as was pointed out, there's a couple of places they would love to have you right down the street, so we hope you keep looking, but I hope you understand.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item. Let's see, consider first reading and public hearing, and I'll let people move a little bit first. We'll wait a couple of minutes here.
Do I got time?
No.
Well, we're going to have to do something.
Not that long.
I don't like to miss public hearings, but there probably ain't nothing going on. It don't take too many.
We taking a recess here?
Uh, no. We're going to keep going. Yeah, let's, let's. Okay. Let's, let's, we've got a lot of public hearings to go through, so if I can have quiet in the, in the audience. Need a little bit of solitude. Thank you very much. Next item, rezoning action, consider first reading and public hearing, a case number 1506, rezoned property from RC2 to AGC at the intersection of Mobley Store and Birken Roads in the McConnells Community. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council.
Evening.
Tim Heeline, eight, or 1462 Walnut Ridge Road, Rock Hill. This is a very simple zoning request. I'm representing the buyer and the seller on this property. I consider this a de-zoning, instead of going on RC2, where I believe you can put a home every one acre or a mobile home there, they want to dezone it to AGC. The folks buying this land want to do substantive, substantive farming, where they able to live off of the land. And in ag zoning, it says you have the right to farm. It's the, only two zoning codes have that, AGC, AGC1, so that's the big reason we're going, requesting it to AGC. They want to put one house on 32 acres and farm it.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Robert Bobby Walker, 5690 Williamson Road, Bethesda Community, Rock Hill, South Carolina. I rise again for a de-zoning or turning it back to what it probably should have been. I always seem to rise in front of y'all either for informational purposes or to oppose something. I'm for this one, just like I was for the one further down Williamson Road last month. It's always nice to see things return back to AGC. Only question I did have is, want to make sure, I know the area pretty well, is, are we sure this is in Winkler and not Christie's?
I'm sure staff would not make that mistake.
Had a little question when I looked at the intersection, but other than that, nothing.
Steve, did you, well, Robert, you would, you would know.
I didn't look at the map specifically on that, but I'm sure it is.
Steve, there was just a question about it being in Mr. Winkler's district versus, versus Mrs. Cox's district.
And that guy, that district was rezoned about four years ago.
Three years ago.
We, we looked these up, this, I think this was in Mr. Winkler's. That's what it's saying.
It'd be probably right on.
So since that question was raised, Michael, is that an issue if it turns out to be in a different council?
Not an issue.
Okay, good enough. Alrighty. So anybody else here want to speak in favor? Thank you, sir. Anybody opposed? Have a motion to close?
Move close. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve the rezoning from RC2 to AGC. Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Next item, rezonation action, consider first reading and public hearing on case number 1505, rezoned property from BD2 to Light Industrial, intersection of Charlotte Highway and West Liberty Hill Road in the Clover Community. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
I'm back, thank you. Tim Heeline, 1462 Walnut Ridge Road, Rock Hill. This is a piece of property, again, representing the seller and the buyer. It was recommended that they request to LI because the buyer has a large mobile motor home, and he pulls a trailer, his son races go-karts, and they want to just build a building there to keep their go-kart trailer, their go-karts and their mobile motor home in a building, and they're going to fence in the area, and that's all it's, it's going to be, it's not going to be a business, it's just going to be for private use. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Yes, ma'am.
Rachel Hughes, I live at 5544 West Liberty Hill Road, and since I have been over there, I've been over there for about 28 years, this has been a residential area from my house all the way out to 49. So if we change this from BD2 to Light Industrial, what kind of value is that going to decrease our home value to, you know? So I'm very well opposed, because that road is very busy as well, and with this increased other stuff that they're going to be bringing in, because we don't know what all they're going to be putting on there, so it could be, and the noise level, if they're going to be riding in the area, so that's another increase, decrease to our value of our homes. So this Light Industrial would, wouldn't be a good thing for us in that area, because there's, there's homes from where I live, 5544, all the way out to this property. You know, though, if this, we're wondering what kind of eyesore that's going to be to our, the value of our property, you know? Because that's what we're concerned about, changing to, to the Light Industrial.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Anybody else opposed? Yes, sir.
I'm Scott Colder, 5615 West Liberty Hill Road, and I oppose this because Liberty Hill Road is a Baron Harold Road. It's not built to state standards, I think it's 12 foot on center or something, and that intersection is also Liberty Hill, Mountain View, and Highway 49, there's been numerous wrecks there. Also, the community is, you know, residential community, if it gets zoned industrial, who's to say, it's not going to store more than one motor home? Seem like that's down the road, there's somebody stores motor homes and stuff and all of that on their property, make money. That's all I got to say about it.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Angie Coulter, I live at 5615 West Liberty Hill Road. My husband was just up here. Six years ago, he got hit by a car. It's so congested through there and everything. You try to run, people try to jog, walk, do everything, you know? There's so much of traffic already on the road. If a school bus is coming down that road, you literally have to move over to the grass or to the edge of the road. I have been run off the road before by a school bus. I've gotten over as far as I could. I've gotten stuck on side of the road and had to have a wrecker pull me out because of that. We've also got trucks, tractor trailer trucks, coming in off of 274, coming on, trying to make the turn on, 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 um, Boulder, on to Liberty Hill Road. The trucks are getting stuck on that road. Okay, if he brings the big UV in, he's coming down Liberty Hill Road, and a bus is coming, what's going to happen there? That's two big vehicles on that road, and a lot of them are cutting through off of 274 to get to the quickest route, or coming off of 40, off of Mountain View, to come to a shorter route, so they don't have to come down that little intersection right there on Charlotte Highway. And it's really a bad place to even have another vehicle pull up everybody that's been in a wreck there on the corner. People actually run the stop signs, don't even stop, go clear across the road. Somebody gets hit. Another driveway there, another big SUVs and all the other buildings there. We do not need that, and I just say I'm opposed of it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I don't, yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Ryan Work, I live at 5665 West Liberty Hill Road, and I wasn't going to mention it, but since everybody's brought it up, it is a dangerous intersection. I got hit April 22nd on my way home. The other day, you can see my car is dented out in the parking lot, waiting for the, my chance to get into the body shop to get it fixed. But the real thing I was going to bring up is, I, I read the agenda, and it said, sites intended use is consistent with changing character of the community. I've lived in that community for eight years, and I see the community going a different direction. There's new residential building just across 49 there. There's a, a house that was dilapidated just down the road, went up for foreclosure, new owner came in and thoroughly renovated it, it looks nothing like the house that was there before. And as far as foot traffic, when I first moved there, there were a couple of people jogged the street, and that was it. Now you see people out walking their dogs, you see kids out playing, you see a lot more foot traffic along that road. It's turning much more into a residential community, and I'm just concerned, I understand the, the intent is not to, to bring really business to the area, but I'm concerned that you start changing codes and things can, can escalate from there. And of course, property values, that's the entrance way to our community, and I don't necessarily want a big warehouse and a fence to be the first thing people see when they come into our community, especially when we're thinking about our property values. That's all good.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Wendy Taylor, 5687 West Liberty Hill Road. We have the property right beside this, and it has been worrisome to see this empty field and not know what's going to go there, and we came before the council 10 years ago. The owner wanted to change it to BD3, and fortunately for us, the council denied it at the time, so we were jumping for joy as we headed out into the parking lot. What I see with this change, what they would like to see, I see what it is, BD2, and I see what that falls under. Now, as someone who is home a lot, it would be very pleasing to have multifamily, that's more neighbors, great, a small office, brick, quiet, no, no busyness, but then I come down to Light Industrial, and I see manufacturing and warehouse and/or wholesale distribution. That's not very appealing, sitting on your front porch with your girls. So I am asking that this council deny this. I don't wish the owner any ill will, and I know that on the end of our street, there is something similar to this, but I also know that the neighbor beside him is miserable. The guy has a big trailer, he has a big warehouse, he has all of his toys, his boats, that his housing development will not allow him to park there because there's homeowners association. So he's picked this property, and now he's dumped all of his stuff there. Well, we don't necessarily want that on our other end, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe that's it, so do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm going to close.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
I'd like to make the motion to approve for discussion.
I'll, I'll second.
Discussion.
For me, one, I have a couple of questions for Steve. I was at the planning commission when this was presented, and presented, Mr. Heeline, that this, this gentleman will be living here as a, oh, he's not going to be living there, he's just going to put the, the building there, okay. So there, there is no residential component to this at all?
Correct.
Okay. Now, if it Okay. Now, if it comes to something other than the storage, they would have to come back before to have the change, right?
Only if you condition the approval to the use of personal storage.
Okay.
Then it would have to come back.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson?
Wow. Between, for, as far as discussion, continuing with discussion, if we were to consider allowing, you know, the owner and the neighbors to look into future usages and so forth as to, because if you're worried about what may come there in the future, and let me back up. As far as, in, as far as the parameters of this property, exactly what is that zoning? I'm forgetting what all of it, all, what's around it.
I was going to make those points.
What, if you will, please.
There's ID on two sides and BD3 on another. And that's, that's what I was going to address in my.
BD2 is like a doctor's office.
Right. But BD3, they got, there's BD3 and ID.
BD3 is a little more than that.
Right. BD3 is adjoining and ID is across the street and down the street.
All right. Well, I really sympathize with some of these things. And again, this is why we have a three reading system. And it actually usually works for the better of everyone once it's all said and done. I would like to maybe reconsider, do I have to yield back to him to change?
Amend the motion?
Yeah.
What's the amendment?
Well, with the, with the amendment of reconsidering conditional zoning and see, see if that could be a possibility and then move at least from one to two and then see what we can come up with, if these folks would reconsider at all. And then, because like I said, I can understand the concern of what may be there in the future and so forth. So.
You could. I mean, this is just first reading, so that process could take effect based on the present.
Yeah, we could add conditions at second reading, I believe.
All right. Wow. Everything's not painted with the same brush. That is a fact. So I'm, I'm going to move to, move this as far as, I guess you'd say, entitled only? Can you say that or not?
The discussion's not over. I was going to.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
Mr. Williams.
They, and that's, that's, up until Ms. Taylor spoke, I believe that everything with this LI with, with conditions would address every one of the concerns except for, I mean, as long as the applicant truly wanted a toy, toy storage places was in the application, would address all the concerns down the road. And when I looked at the zoning, that's what I expected to see, unlike zoning, especially after the comments about it going residential. But you do have BD3 across the street and beside and ID on the other side and then ID behind the BD3. ID is even worse than LI. This LI would be in the middle, but the conditions, I think, one thing, BD3 had some uses, I think, that are certainly, that you found acceptable. I think there's some in there that may not be as acceptable. I'm thinking that this LI zoning with conditions may, may address your, all of your concerns better than denying it and having something grow in BD. But that's, that was, I was going to suggest the same thing, is that we look at some conditions on the second reading.
So we, yes?
I'll accept the amendment to do it with a conditional.
Well, the conditions, we don't have the conditions, so it would be tough to put them on first reading, but, but we should have them.
As a conditional.
Hopefully there'll be some meetings that take place between.
Conditional LI. Is your, you're okay? Okay, we're good.
But if the, we may want to hear from the applicant because if he's got no desire to accept conditions, then we can decide tonight.
Thank you. I understand your concerns. When we originally came and asked for the zoning, really wanted to D-zone. Residential, if there, if he built a house there and he went for residential zoning, and correct me if I'm wrong, if he is residential, he could put a bigger, he could put a, as big a building as he wants there and park whatever he wants there. I came in and talked to Steve. He wanted to do BD, I think, 3, 4, just the storage of his personal stuff. And that's when they said, I didn't want to go to LI, neither did the buyer. And then also, building, he's got to build, I believe, a block, a brick, brick building. I think with restrictions, I don't think he'll have a problem with that at all. He's not going to open a business there. It's for his personal, call it personal toys. But he just, it's because he can't, on residential, he could, he could do that there.
Yeah, if he lived there, he could see that.
Yeah.
And I think that could be part of the conditional.
But he's not out to hurt, he's not out to hurt the neighborhood. He's got a road cut off of Highway 49 and he's going to put a U-shaped, where he's going to go off of 49 pulling and then pull out Liberty. He's not going to be driving there and I don't think you'd have a problem with that.
Thank you, Tim. I can see where this is going. All right. So we got a motion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Okay, next reading. Consider, council to a whole public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance entitled to further amend an ordinance entitled to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, to provide for grant funds from the South Carolina Power Team for the purpose of funding additional appropriations for the western speculative building and to provide for other fiscal matters related to county government. Anybody, yeah, public hearing. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Have a motion?
Close.
Got a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Now.
Sorry, got ahead of myself there. Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Hold a public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to convey the annex portion of AO Jones Boulevard to the town of Fort Mill by quick claim deed and to provide for other matters related thereto. Anybody here want to speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Consider approval of nominated applicants for service for boards and commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on April 21st, 2015, along with nominations from the floor.
Did we miss one?
Uh, did I skip one?
Old business.
Old business.
Old business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure did. Back up one second here. Old business. Res zoning action. Consider third reading case number 1504, 4030 country overlook in the Fort Mill community rezoned property from BD, I mean PD to RC1.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Consider approval of nominated applicants for service for boards and commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on April 21st, along with nominations from the floor. Michael Drummond, York County Natural Gas Authority, Jim White, Newport Fire Tax District, and William Mitchell, Newport Fire Tax District Board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. There being no nominations. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Council to consider an emergency temporary dwelling permit request at 399 Neely Store Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Council to consider the summer food service program sponsor contract agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Consider authorizing approval of a venue agreement with the York American Legion for utilization of county properties for the staging of its Veterans Day parade.
Move to approve. Subject to the county attorney's approval. Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next. Consider a proclamation in recognition of peace officers Memorial Day.
Move to approve.
And we got, do we have a second?
Second.
Anybody? Everybody good? Okay. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Consider approval for sheriff's office to apply and accept, if awarded, a bulletproof vest partnership grant in the amount of $33,565.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Council to consider first reading of an ordinance entitled to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to provide for other fiscal matters related to county government. Need a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have.
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Johnson?
I know that we're going to start.
Tomorrow, Wednesday?
Wednesday, on this entire process. But I spent a, I didn't get this till today, so I only spent about 45 minutes on it. But I'd like to just ask a couple of questions, not to get answers tonight, but to set them up so that Wednesday night there are answers to these questions. One thing I'd like to see, and it may be in here because again, I did not have as much time, I'd like to see a breakout of reoccurring expenses versus one-time expenses as shown as a part of the budget. I think that we lumped them kind of together into this large budget and it's hard to tell how you're spending reoccurring monies with reoccurring revenues. So I'd like to see that broken, I'd like to see the one-time expenses capital project broken out of this budget.
Right. That's the best way to do it, just pull out the one-time expense.
I would also like, I've noticed going through some of these, that there are some fairly substantial changes. I'd like to know as a percentage of the budget, what the county increase will be for personnel and operating expenses as a percentage of that budget. And I'm also going to, you know, and at some point, I'm going to need somebody from the CVB to walk in and explain to me why their personnel and operations budget went up $81,250 and why the Lake Wiley visitor's centers budget went up $49,000 in one year, other than they got more H-tax money. I'm also curious about the Riverview Special Fire District. They have a 400% increase in their budget. Like to, somebody to try to explain that one. And also, I have a question. It may just be the way I'm reading it, there's a line item for county local hospitality tax that goes up 60%. I don't know if the revenues are just going up or what that is.
We just appropriated.
Okay, you moved the fund balance over. Okay, well, that, see, that was an easy.
What Ben Ashen do for eight months.
Yeah. Well, yeah. And I did see, and I did see the chart and I do appreciate you taking this out five years and showing us how we do over that five-year period. Those are just kind of my first blush looking through this little 14-page summary. But those are certainly questions I'm going to have when we start up Wednesday night.
And just to remind the new council members, I mean, the meeting we have Wednesday, it'll be a good time to come up with your questions. So we're just kind of doing.
Been working on them already.
First reading. So if there's no other comments, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Staff recommends council to approve the following agreement with the City of Tigakay Utility Agreement, Temporary Construction Easement and Slope Permissions Agreement, and Tigakay Gold Hill Road Connector Construction Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can, when, one of the things that would help is on these things, when it says staff recommends approval, is there a specific staff person that this is, that I need to be directing questions to when these kinds of things come up?
Bill, you want to?
I don't, I don't have, I don't have a specific question, although I do think it would help if in these agenda packets, we would have a designated person to address the issues and the questions that are going to be asked. Consistency would be helpful.
Okay. If there's no further questions, question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Consider first reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease to renew our community ROC of a portion of county property located at White Street and Oakland Avenue.
Move to approve.
Yeah, I was just thrown off by that a little bit.
Second.
Well, let me finish it, but in the, in containing approximately 4.43 acres of the former Good Automotive property, including the former showroom and body shop, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. So Chad gave the motion and Bump gave the second, I believe. So discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Consider approval of Arrow Road Construction Agreement with the City of York.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item. Consider authorization of a certificate of eligibility for portion of admissions tax for infrastructure improvements.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve this consent agenda as presented.
Discussion. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Committee reports. Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Chairman, Michael Johnson.
We met Tuesday, April 21st. We're in a kind of a, we, really what we did is we sat through a meeting of the H-Tax group. As, I'm not sure we actually met as much as we just sat and listened to them. Part of that meeting, we were able to walk, to listen to the Fort Mill School District give a proposal for use of H-Tax funds. We had some general discussions and I think out of that, what we ended up, what H-Tax group did basically at the end of the day was, they said they're going to try to send these applications to us twice a year as opposed to just rolling them in randomly when we're not looking. They'll be, we will get them by October 1st. There are two dates and one of, and I, and we will, and what will happen is we'll have about six weeks as a, as an H, as a finance operations committee to look at it if we're so inclined to look at it that long. And then the council will actually have six weeks to look at it before we've said, yes, we'll, we'll get this out. And by setting those guidelines of, you know, we're going to need some time, three months to review these documents. Our hope is to slow down the process so that everybody up here is comfortable with all of our H-Tax requests, especially when it comes to capital projects. Other than, I think that was about all we, we really agreed on and accomplished in that view.
Thanks, sir. Planning and Economic Development Committee Chairman, Robert Winkler.
Thanks, sir. Planning and Economic Development met on Tuesday, April 28th at 11:00 a.m. and actually, we had to move that to, it was 11, I'm sorry, before the county's economic development board meeting. And we got a update from David Swinson on, you know, kind of what's happening and where we're at with economic development in the county. Actually, got a look at kind of what is going to be put on our county website, I believe, for all of our citizens to see as far as a dashboard of what's going on with the economic development, where dollars are being spent and what they're doing for us. So that was good. He also brought up an idea of looking at some different funding for economic development. We did not have time to get into that in as much detail as I would have liked. So we did have another meeting this evening, immediately before this council meeting at 5:30, and we addressed that a little more. And it came from that meeting as a recommendation to put it before the full council to vote on using the proceeds from the Knight's property for funding economic development. So, fund, so to put it before the full council to look at that.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Next item. Council member, new non-agenda comments. Any councilmen have any comments to make?
Aye.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy.
Mr. Chairman, I would respectfully ask that you come up with some type of guideline or rule during our public hearing part to not allow some of the, the public to come up and drop bombshell accusations and that they keep to the topic that the public hearing is for. Because a lot of the public hearings kind of tends to get off base for what we're here to discuss with, whether it's. here to discuss with, whether it's a rezoning, or the TIF situation, or any type of agenda item that the public, general public has come to discuss. I think a lot of times, we allow them too much latitude to get off course of what we're here to discuss, and I think, you know, to have people come up and make accusations against this council that have nothing to do with the agenda item, I think that's, that's totally disrespectful to, to us as councilmen and women, and certainly has no place in these chambers, and if anybody has any kind of questions, comments, or concerns outside of the agenda items that we're here to discuss, I think those need to be taken up prior to or after the council meeting, but don't allow them to come up and, and take public shots at us with no, with kind of really no recourse to, to kind of counteract that. And, you know, I hate to feel like I got kicked in the gut and called out on something, but it really got to me tonight, when, you know, someone makes accusation of improper doing of anyone on this council, not just me, but any other, other six councilmembers sitting up here, I think it's, it's kind of out of place to come here and make those.
And I, and I agree with you, but he quoted public record, so when he's quoting public record.
Well, he didn't state everything that's, I mean, if he's gonna give, if he's gonna give off a economic interest statement, he needs to read the whole one, don't just come here and, and, you know, pull out, you know, what makes it seem like it's something when it's not, but if, if, you know, I have no, no, no objection to anyone going to pull up anybody's statement of economic interest, but if you're gonna come in and quote that, you know, don't just, don't just pick out bits and pieces, because he didn't say whether it was, he didn't list, I mean, he mentioned Coca-Cola. Coca-Cola's not even down in the downtown area, but he, he figured all that into who all made a donation to, to a particular campaign in quoting numbers, but I'd be more than willing to bring out a, a copy and post it on the board, but, you know, not only that, but anytime someone comes and takes public shots at us, that has nothing to do with the agenda item. I just think that that really has no place, and is disrespectful to all of us up here, and including everyone that, that gives their time and effort to serve, you know, if you want to make that, there's avenues to make those accusation or charges, but this, this forum here is not the place to, to make those charges. There, there are certainly avenues that any individual can take if they have any concern with anyone's campaign contributions, or anyone voting improperly, or need to recuse, recuse themselves, but don't, don't, that process doesn't start in this chamber, it starts somewhere else, and if there's something to be heard or had, that will come back to us, so.
Well, and I agree, that was a fine line there that was being balanced, so.
You know, I mean, that's borderline of just public slander going on record to, to question that, but.
Well, that's, that's why I was listening intently for, and when he mentioned public record, I, I, you know, since it's public record, I kind of backed off a little bit and didn't say anything, but I was listening intently. Yes, sir.
Yeah, our personal rules say the council, the council wants to hear your concerns or complaints, but will not tolerate personal attacks on individual council members, county staff, or any other person or group, including the use of demeaning or vulgar language.
We need to stick with that.
That's our rules.
Yeah, well, that's, I guess that's a matter of interpretation, when you're quoting public record, and we're held accountable for what we do, that's, that was the balance I was juggling. So I've had my feelings for it probably a lot more than you have, and sometimes I have to suck it up a little bit. Yes, sir.
You know, this past week, I was down in Florida visiting a, an aunt, and right before I left, the Baltimore situation broke wide open. Immediately, I thought it was going to, going to settle down, but of course, it took a complete opposite direction. And then, then you had some other places that were getting involved, you know, as we all saw so much that was happening on the TV, from, from the rioting, to the Mother of the Year, to all this kind of stuff that was taking place, and you can have one opinion or, or the other about all that, but one thing I, I hope that we all can agree on, and, and at least in my opinion, I don't know that this was all about just one single event, or one single person that tragically died, and I do, my, I mean, I, it was just an awful situation, regardless of why or how, you know, the guy passed away, and, but all lives matter, all lives should matter. And I, with the defense and concern of good, solid, young people, from all backgrounds, that might, would, possibly would want to go into law enforcement, I'm mighty afraid if we don't step up to the plate, as government bodies, as individuals, clergy, just, who, whatever you are in society, I think, and if we all don't step up to the plate and really, really say that this is not going to happen, as far as what I think the big plan, when you start hearing statements about wanting to nationalize or federalizing the police force around the country, personally, I think you'll make it worse in hurting people and, and damaging, and violating people's rights. I would hope that, that maybe we could come up with some type of declaration or proclamation as far as being openly against, against the nationalization or federalization of, of our police force around the country, because folks, in my opinion, if, if you really, really, really are concerned about lives that are black, protest an abortion clinic in downtown Cleveland. Protest in Chicago when you have black-on-black crime, and a small child gets hit with a stray bullet that was not intended, but it was their, their older brother that was intended to get shot. I want to see people go and raise some cane, peaceful demonstrations, but raise some cane about those type of things. In other words, go after the heart of the matter, the core of the problem, and I'd like for something to be stated in an overall proclamation, declaration, that would indicate all this, or else, folks, I, I'm afraid that the, when the opportunity arises, you know, some of these folks that wants these things, that breaks saying that they're wanting to bring about justice, or the right thing, or the right outcome, or whatever, I think the super majority of us, from the black population to the white population, Hispanics, so forth, you know, it took whites and blacks to work together to end slavery, took whites and blacks together to work together on the civil rights movement, whites and blacks to work together to develop some form of, you know, equal opportunity in this country. And I, and I'm convinced it'll take us, the ones who have been here the longest, you know, and everyone else is welcome, as long as they do it the right way, we don't care, we're all a country of immigrants, and no matter how you got here, we're here. But, but, but back to the issue, if, if whites and blacks can work together, look at the root cause of all these problems, but we do not need to be taking it out on our police officers, or on the law enforcement, my God, if, if you keep doing what you're doing, if, if we, as a country, keep doing what we're doing, we're gonna, folks, good folks like that right there, they're gonna quit protecting us, and it's gonna be mass chaos. I don't want to see that, but it's coming if we don't step up to the plate and make some statements, making a stand, make a stand, and have some backbone to do it and mean what we say, and literally stand up for the right thing. If, if someone would work with me on some type of proclamation, declaration, and pass it along to our state guys as well, because I think we're at a crossroads, and we're at a very detrimental crossroads. I'll conclude by saying that my heart goes out for everyone that's involved in these, these awful, awful situations, people that got hurt, people that continues to get hurt, these police, the gentleman that died, Mr. Gray, that, everyone else that, that, I think some people are capitalizing on people's misery. Now, far as I'm concerned, all lives matter. I don't care who they are, and I would, I would like to see us do something in, in honor of a proclamation toward our police officers, and, and maybe blend it all together in honoring everyone, and letting us know where we need to be getting back to, because we're, we're gonna, we're, we're so messed up right now, that, that, as a society, you can see in the history, world history, and I, I saw where this guy wrote a book in the 1930s about these great societies of the past that had fallen apart because of some of the very stuff that we're looking at and seeing on our televisions right now, and I, for one, I, and I know we all, I'm probably preaching to the choir, God forbid if there's one communist socialist in here, but I'm, but I'm just telling you right now, we better come together, folks, before it's, before it's too late, and, and we need to work together to make it happen. Thank you.
And I, you know, I think that's a good thought, I mean, if you want to work on a proclamation for our law enforcement in the area, get with staff and do that, and we'll have it the next meeting. Mr. Williams, did I see you? Raise your hand? No?
Just one quick, you know, I always want to thank law enforcement, firefighters, and everyone else, but something that we don't mention as often as we should probably is all the staff, all of us got a 320-page email Thursday afternoon for everything we're doing tonight, and they had to work to put all that together. All of us got this on Friday, if we were in town, which is the budget, and they had to work on all of that, and they don't get the things they deserve sometimes, they're always, you know, even though I say they shouldn't, they still respond to emails at 10:30 at night and things like that, so, you know, you can never say thank you enough, so thank y'all.
That being said, and that was well said, I must add, I will just remind the two newest members, Ms. Cox and Mr. Winkler, don't be overwhelmed with the budget, because unless you're a Martian, you're gonna have that sensation, it just means you're human, and you went through what we all went through, including Mr. Shanahan, probably, when he first looked at it.
Amen.
But let's have a motion for executive session, if we could.
May we go into executive session to receive legal advice and discuss contractual matters?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we'll start at 9:15. We've just completed the executive session, there are no action items, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.